Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is your regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. It is Wednesday, March 10th, 2021 at 6:05 PM. And I am calling this meeting to order, and I would like to do a roll call. Selectmen Pacheco.
Present.
And are you participating remotely?
Yes, I am.
Selectmen Goulart.
Yes, remotely.
Thank you. And Selectmen Zagrafos is participating remotely and present. And with that, I just wanted to say there are no scheduled hearings, even though we have some scheduled appointments tonight. Public input, as always, may be provided using the following methods: either email, telephone, or the Zoom link, you know, as listed on the agenda. A recording of the meeting will be accessible on the Town of Dayton's YouTube channel, and it will also be replayed on Channel 9, as is customary. And with that, I ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, and please remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman.
Yes.
Since our last meeting, we have lost several members of the community. So in memory of Frank L. Coughlin Jr., Luann Mitchell, and Jared Torres, I ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And as always, our condolences to their family and friends as well. The first item on our agenda this evening is a proclamation for Women's History Month. Selectmen Goulart, did you want to present and read the proclamation?
Absolutely. Whereas National Women's History Month traces its roots to March 8, 1857, when women from various New York City factories staged a protest over poor working conditions. And whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, emancipation movement, industrial labor movement, civil rights movement, peace movement, and more than, and more that aim to create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor of the nation. And whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working in, working inside and outside of the home. Whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas 2021 was ushered in with Kamala Harris taking office as the first woman and first black and South Asian Vice President of the United States. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And now we therefore, the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Dayton, do hereby proclaim March 2021 to be Women's History Month and urge all the citizens of the Town of Dayton to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. Brett Ozagrapf is PhD Chairman, Nancy J. Goulart Clerk, Kenneth J. Pacheco Member.
Selectmen Goulart, before I entertain motions, I just wanted to yield the floor to both you and Selectmen Pacheco, if you had any remarks, especially you, Selectmen Goulart, as one of the first women selectmen, I know that's a weird phrase, right? To serve in this role. And you've served our town in many different capacities, luckily for us, right? So I just wanted to know, did you have anything you wanted to add to this or anything it meant to you to see this on the agenda?
Yeah. I think it's very important that, that there is this recognition of all the contributions that have been made in considering that there was a time when women couldn't hold prop, they couldn't own property. Their, their, I'll say their domestic life was pretty much within the home raising the family because the husbands went out to work. But also the role of the military, all of the women who served in, you name the war, they were there because they were the ones that had to take care of those who were injured and were probably with, were with them as they passed away. The one thing I will say, I'm actually the third person to serve as a selectman in the Town of Dayton. The first one being Mrs. Marina Santos. The second one being attorney Elizabeth Balaschak, and now me. And so I want to encourage women in town. I know you, you're raising a family right now, you don't have a lot of time. But as the kids grow older and leave the house, really take a look at what's available and how you can serve in town. I think it's very important. It was interesting, when I was elected in 2007, and I looked around Town Hall, the only male I remember being there on a regular basis was the building commissioner, who had an office across the hall from the Board of Selectmen. It seemed every department had, in Town Hall, physically in the building. The elected officials were women, the people that worked with them were women. And it was like, even though we had two male selectmen, the day to the operation was being run by women. We didn't have a town administrator or anything like that. And when I was elected, it was Mrs. Annette Wuritz. Literally, she ran the town because everything had to come through the selectmen's office. She was there all day long, she was the person, she was the board of health person, also the, our executive secretary. So I want to recognize all the women who have served over the years, in effect, running this town, making sure that bills are paid and, and people are served. And it's just, it's amazing how much women have done in this community, other than the fact the town is named for Francis Dayton. And I'm sure back then that was an honorary thing, and she probably wasn't allowed to do much participating in town government. But as the expression goes, we've come a long way, baby, and let's keep going, ladies.
I like that. Thank you, Selectmen Goulart. Selectmen Pacheco.
Yes, Mrs. Goulart said everything so well. I think we should be proud that Mrs. Goulart is presently on the board. She's our longest, longest-serving selectwoman for the Board of Selectmen. And we should be proud of that. Unfortunately, as Mrs. Goulart said, we've only had three females, and hopefully in the future we'll have more as time goes on. It's been over 100 years since women have been able to vote. And I am so proud that today we can have and say that we have a female Vice President. It's the first time, obviously, in our history. And it means that we're progressing and that women are being given more authority. They shouldn't have to be given it, it should be just a right. But that's the world we live in. And I'm so proud that Dayton has been able to elect females to the position of, on the select, I was gonna say select bar, but the board of selectmen. So this is really a dedication to Mrs. Goulart, quite frankly, I think. And I think it's important that we recognize her, given that I believe she may only have one more meeting with us. Given, give her the recognition that it wasn't an easy task to run for select as a female in the past. I remember the second elected female selectwoman was really given a difficult time. I won't get into it too much, but I really thought she was being belittled a lot. Marina Santos, who was our town historian, she had a great history with the town. And I'm proud that she was one of our selectwomen. But I'm prepared to make a motion if that, if, if you're ready.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion that the Dayton Board of Selectmen do hereby proclaim March 2021 as Women's History Month.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and under discussion. I just wanted to, because Selectmen Goulart did say it perfectly. And I really don't have much to add, other than to say, I think you hit the nail on the head, Selectmen Goulart, when you talked about a lot of the women in the town in the form of employees really being the steady hand on the tiller over the years, not just now, not just, you know, years past, or when I took office, or when you first took office. But I think we've traditionally have a lot of female employees. And I think that's something we should be proud of, that our town is literally the day-to-day operations. A lot of them are being run with women at the helm. And I think we should all be grateful and take a lot of pride in that, so thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to, to my two colleagues. And I will just mention this because when Selectmen Pacheco mentioned the second woman, I don't think I was in office two weeks, 2007. I was sitting in the selectmen's office, working at one of the desks, and Mrs. Wuritz was sitting where Leanne is now. And a burly young man came in and asked for one of the selectmen by name, and neither one of them were there. And she said, however, Mrs. Goulart is here, and she's a selectman, maybe she can help you. And he started to come towards me, and he stopped, and he looked at me and said, we got a woman selectman? I sat there thinking, what year is this? And all I said to him was, you got a problem with that? And he says, well, no. And then he told me what he wanted, and I answered his question. But, so when you talked about that attorney Balaschak having a tough time, that was the only time I ran into that. But it was, it was so early, and it was like he was shocked. And I'm thinking, it was a public election, but anyhow.
Hearing no further, I've heard that story before, and it always makes me laugh, but also cringe. I do hear it, Selectmen Goulart. Hearing no further discussion, Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also aye. And up for scheduled appointments tonight, and I apologize, Mr. Ferry, although I will say 17 minutes late is like on time for us. So with that, we have several things to discuss with you, sir. And thank you for being present tonight. And the first thing is to address the Serpide report. I think this refers to the technical memorandum that we worked with Serpide to have created in order to assess where the signs should be placed in the safety zone that we created in the Pleasant Street area. And I know they gave us three scenarios. And I don't know if you want me to summarize, or did you want to summarize, Mr. Ferry?
Actually, unless Mr. Mullen has more to add, we still gotta do a little bit more research. I'd like to recommend that you just table it at this time. We'll get back to you as quick as we can.
That's fine. Yeah, I know you had contacted Mass DOT. I didn't see an answer, so yes, I agree, sir.
Okay.
Good idea. So I will entertain a motion, and this will give everyone time to actually digest and really review the memorandum. It is a long document for anyone who has not seen it. So it's 40, 50 pages, so that's fine. We can wait for that. And I will entertain a motion to take this under advisement for a future meeting.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Superintendent Ferry, sir, you have the floor.
So next on the agenda would be the update on Route 44 reconstruction. There's gonna be a notice, I believe it's already on your Facebook and the website. So while, while people are hearing my voice, starting May, March 15th, which is what, next week? There will be construction started on Route 44 from New Street through Taunton stretch, doing shoulder work, lane improvements. So there will be some lane closures from time to time. This is all in preparation for final asphalt paving. But this project is 18 months long, so be prepared for that. That's why we want to get the word out. People may want to seek alternate routes from time to time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Earth Day is coming up. I believe Leanne finished a note going out with that. Historically, we helped out with people picking up piles of trash as they pick up areas in town, curbside, you know, road sides and park areas and open space areas. We'll continue doing that, but there's going to be no scheduled birthday event, mainly because of COVID at this time. So my phone number is on that flag going out, it's also on the town website to point if someone needs bags, or would like to let me know when they're picking up an area so I can pick up the trash.
Thank you, sir. I did see on Tremont Street the other day, a random bag. It looks like someone must have gone and collected it like privately, which is nice to see. You know, people aren't waiting until Earth Day.
Yes, that resident steals our trash often, and they take it, they take it away too. We don't get to pick it up. So there are several, there's actually quite a few people in town that take pride in their own neighborhood, and they, they take care of it. But we're offering assistance as best we can, and that's why I'm particularly know. Okay.
Thank you, sir. I know that's the only thing we have under your scheduled appointment, but did you have anything else that maybe wasn't on the agenda that you wanted to apprise the Board of or discuss?
My way down in correspondence, A, B, E, F, and G.
Yeah.
Seem to touch me a little bit.
Okay. Board, do we want to take those out of order while Mr. Ferry is here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we take item 13A. Did you say B as in Bob?
Yes, I'm not sure what that correspondent is, but it sounds like.
Was it?
B, C?
E, F, and G also.
E, F, and G, okay, yes.
Also C, I thought, right?
No, I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of that.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Does, if anyone has like a paper copy, do you want to go over Mr. Dalton's email? It's gonna take me a while electronically to get down there.
Oh, it's gonna take a while, Brett, because of all the budget items beforehand.
Uh, okay. Think I have it.
Yeah.
I have it. It just, it says, that was quick, I went all the way to the end. Hello, my name is William Dal- this is for anyone watching, my apologies, I should do a proper introduction. We received an email from a student at Dayton Middle School. I mean, so I'm just gonna read the email that we received, that we're about to discuss. My name is William Dalton, and I'm a Dayton middle school student, and I live in the Town of Dayton. I've lived in and loved Dayton for 13 years of my life. It is important to me and a part of the person I will become. It is important to me that we keep this town clean and keep this town safe. The safety of humans and land should be the top priority for our town. Adding sidewalks to the town seems to me as something massively important and necessary for everyone living in this town to be safe. I live on Main Street, and I walk my two dogs a lot, and there are no sidewalks, which puts me and them in danger. People drive quickly down that road, and it doesn't make me feel safe knowing there is no sidewalk and nothing to protect me from her person in the car. I think adding sidewalks is definitely something that this town needs and should be common on roads that have a large amount of people and houses. Thank you, William Dalton. It's nice to get emails from students that are engaged with their community, which is fabulous. Mr. Ferry, I know we have personally talked about projects such as Main Street, but I don't know if you wanted to, I wanted to give you the floor first, because I know you are, have a.
I heard about, I heard about this letter, and it's great that we have a young generation communicating on a government level, and that's wonderful. I wanted to also take advantage of keeping that project alive, because this is an active project. Last annual town meeting, we appropriated money for engineering and design of the sidewalk and drainage upgrade on that road prior to considering a full road reconstruction with overlay. We've been also working with the water district, trying to tackle that water main concern that's on that road also. So if your board chooses to respond to him, let him know that there is an active design being worked on. I checked on the update on that. They do have to reflag a couple more areas. As people can notice, there's, most of the street has flags, multiple colors all the way up and down the road. And that's what that's about. And they have to do some more calculations in drainage investigation before they actually draw pitches and turn them into us to act on for the next stage.
Thank you, sir. And just, so I guess I'll just briefly summarize what I said back to the student, and the board can decide if we want to formally write back. I didn't get into details, I just thanked him for his email. I said that we've been committed to increasing pedestrian safety via sidewalk installation. I said we'll continue to do so utilizing grant programs such as, through the Commonwealth and Mass DOT, such as complete streets and shared streets and spaces. And I told Mr. Dalton that we had applied for funding to support installation of ADA compliant sidewalks and crosswalks at various locations throughout our town, and I appreciated him reaching out. If that's not sufficient in the board's mind, we can certainly send him a formal, maybe letter or something, if that's how the board chooses to respond.
Mr. Dr. Z, I think it would be nice for the board to send him a letter. I think a student would be impressed with getting something on Town Letterhead, signed by the three members of the board, thanking him for writing to us and expressing his opinion, and telling him that there is a very active reconstruction project for Main Street, and it's from William Street, is it all the way to 138, Mr. Ferry?
All the way to Elm Street.
Elm Street.
That's last section, 2138, already has sidewalks on both sides of the road, right?
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion that we, the board, sent him a letter, thanking him for contacting us and advising him that there is a very active and ongoing project to reconstruct Main Street, which will include sidewalks from William Street to Elm Street.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Bear with me just a moment. We do have a resident who wants to make a public comment, probably before we vote. So under discussion, Ms. Dushkowsky, if you don't mind just stating your name and address, please.
Sure, Jennifer Dushkowsky, 2414 County Street, Dayton. I just also wanted to say, I think that it's wonderful that the board is going to recognize this student. But I also wanted to recognize this teacher, Heather Rose, for implementing the Project Citizen curriculum. Project Citizen is a curriculum that I've been trained in in the past. It's a wonderful curriculum to help students with civic engagement. And I think that it's fantastic that that's being offered at Dayton Middle School and that our students are getting actively involved and engaged and learning more about the process. So thank you to Mrs. Rose for doing that.
Thank you. Yes, that sounds fabulous. I was wondering, because we had a couple other emails. And I, I was thinking like, is this part of a program? But I didn't really know, so that's the missing piece of the puzzle. That makes sense, that's fabulous. Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also aye. We also received an email on March 1st from Catherine Domonoski. And also it was forwarded to us from educator Heather Rose, again, at Dayton Regional District. And I guess I'll just read it for those. It was actually addressed to the Conservation Commission and got routed to us. And they wrote, "Project Citizen is a cross-curricular activity between social studies and ELA that requires that students identify a policy at a school or town level that they believe needs to be modified, replaced, or moved altogether. I believe that the littering policy in Dayton is not enforced as well as it should be and may need modifications to make it better. Our littering policy is loose and not well-established. The Dayton Town Hall website states under the Conservation Commission that the water should be protected, yet does not clearly state a punishment for violating the bylaw. Litter not only puts the streets of our little town to shame, but also harms the water that we and other plants and animals depend on to survive. Thirty-four miles away, a town called Blackstone already dons a littering policy of its own, complete with a clear punishment for violating it. Why don't we follow their lead? By my house, there is a sign warning that littering in the area is prohibited, and offenders can be fined up to $1,000, yet I find plastic bags, bottles, and glass there on a regular basis. This is a serious problem because the Taunton River runs right through there, and litter getting in the water could be detrimental. Thank you for taking the time to read this email and hear me out, and I do hope you consider enforcing the littering policy in Dayton. Sincerely, Catherine Domonoski." Dayton Middle School, grade eight student.
So is it my turn?
If you choose to speak first, yes.
So it's, it's, forgive me for not really understanding the letter. We do have a bylaw in place, are they asking for a stronger policy?
It actually sounds like to me like they were conflating like some kind of bylaw or policy with the Conservation Commission's Wetlands Protection Act. That's what it sounded, because that's what's on the website. So I think maybe this actually, part of it should go to the Conservation Commission for their review, because it literally cites the Taunton River and water, which would fall under that, so.
Okay.
We don't have a formal policy, though, Mr. Ferry, is that correct?
I'm not aware of the policy, but we have a very strong bylaw.
We have a bylaw.
Yeah.
We also, sorry.
No, it's okay, Selectmen Goulart, you have the floor.
Um, there are a number of departments in town that this really affects. Obviously, the strongest thing, and I don't think this student knows there is a bylaw. So I think we should respond to her and thank her. I think we should attach a copy of the bylaw, and we can reference the Wetlands Protection Act conservation. I think the stress is on the fact she thinks we're not enforcing this. But I will also say that the Stormwater Committee can also contribute to this. And we can put one of those brochures that we have that talks about not only trash and litter, but animal waste and things that people are supposed to do. So I think we have the processes in place. If the concern is just trying to stop littering on the side of the roads, that falls to the police department. And trying to track that is like trying to catch speed, it's all over town at the same time. But I think it, I think we should respond. And I will certainly write something, the board could sign the letter if Mrs. Brady puts it together. And I will give her something to indicate the Stormwater Committee's role and reference the regulations that we have about this too. I'm glad to see that a young person is interested in this, quite frankly.
I am as well. And I think maybe also if we're gonna include or forward this to the Conservation Commission to make sure they get it under correspondence, that we could also forward it to our police chief and to Dayton Police Department, as they really are the entity responsible for the enforcement part of that, especially if there's been a violation. Now, I say that if a car's going, you know, speeding down the road and throws trash out the window and no one's around, you know, there's gonna be no one there to catch them, right? And that situation will happen, it will always happen, because people are everywhere, and we don't have limitless resources. However, I do think that we should at least get the letter to the appropriate departments and have it be on their radar, so that anyone who's playing a part in this will know that we have eyes on the situation, and people know, people want us to enforce these laws, regulations, and policies. I think he's saying yes, that was against Mr. Ferry. Okay. Did we take a vote on this?
We didn't have a motion yet.
No.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, the Board of Selectmen, respond to Ms. Domana, Domonoski, and include a copy of the town's bylaw regarding littering and the penalties. And I will give Mrs. Brady something from the Stormwater Committee, and maybe we'll include one of those brochures that we have. And also that we copy this message that we received and copies of the letter that we send to the Conservation Commission and the Police Department, so that they're aware of her concern and what we have responded. And obviously, there's. so that they're aware of her concern and what we have responded. And obviously, there's the enforcement issue uh for the Police Department there.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
I'll just make a comment. That's the reason why we gotta have Earth Day, unfortunately. We have to go on the streets and clean up. The last time I cleaned up on Earth Day on Brook Street, I counted a hundred and thirty-five nip bottles that I picked up. Including with that also some water bottles. Some of the water bottles were half full, but none of the nip bottles were had anything in it. They were all empty. So it just, that's kind of telling. Uh but it's a shame that people are drinking them or wanting while they're driving and then throwing the nip bottles before they go home or before they go to work or whatever uh on the sides of the road. So I sympathize with uh Mrs. What Miss Domonoski is saying, so I'm supporting this uh motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos also an aye. Uh and the last letter, bear with me just a second. I'm sorry, the next letter is a letter from Joe Simeo regarding a resignation from the Highway Department. And bear with me just a moment. It says, I, uh Joe Simeo hereby am resigning from the Town of Dayton Highway Department due to personal circumstances. It's by no fault of the town or Highway Department that has led me to this very difficult decision. It's been an honor to have served the Town of Dayton and its community, as well as an amazing experience for the Highway Department, and signed Joe Simeo. Uh Mr. Ferry, before I entertain motions to accept the resignation letter, I just wanted to yield the floor if you wanted to say anything, and if not, I will entertain motions.
Um it it was a pleasure having Joe with us. It's unfortunate he had to make that decision. I know it was a tough decision on his part. He was a good match to our crew and our community as he serves, uh also as the letter dictates, and he will be missed.
Absolutely, and I will second that, even though it's not a motion, and say um that I appreciate your service, Mr. Simeo. Um and you served us well, and we're very appreciative uh of your service, sir. And with that, I will entertain motions.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Joe Simeo from the Highway Department with regret and appreciation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. And the last letter tonight for Mr. Ferry is a letter from Joe Simeo regarding a donation of sick time. And he writes, I, Joe Simeo, would like to donate all the remainder of my sick time to Bill to also Highway Department employee Bill Mendoza to be used as he sees fit. And it's signed by Joe Simeo and dated March sixth, twenty twenty-one, like the resignation letter. And I will say before I entertain motions to this that my understanding, my recollection, is that this has been done in the past. Um I recall actually our previous town administrator donated um a significant amount of her accrued sick time um to Mr. Simeo, ironically enough, um when she departed in October. And I believe it's also been done once before as well since I've been here. Um so we do have the precedent. I think it's a nice thing. My philosophy is he accrued his sick time. It's unused. We were either be, you know, it it it's gonna go somewhere. And he gets the right, in my opinion, to say where it's gonna go. But I will entertain um motions or discussion by the board.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donation of sick time from Joe uh Simeo to uh Bill Mendoza.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I will just ask a general question under discussion here. Um account, the accounting department, Mr. Ferry, knows how much time will be donated and has accrued, right?
Yes, uh this this letter is referring to fifteen-point change hours.
Okay.
And is one more letter to consider for that. The next letter is also towards Bill also.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, I got ahead of myself on the letters. Any further discussion?
The other person who donated was uh the foreman at the Highway Department, Mr. Hazel.
They, thank you, yes. You've got a sharp memory, Selectmen Goulart. I
That wasn't that long ago.
I know, you are correct. Hearing no further discussion. Uh all those in favor, excuse me, I'm sorry, Selectmen uh Goulart, you can go first. Your vote.
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. We also received it a letter uh dated March seventh from Linda McCarron, our sadly outgoing assistant town accountant, and she writes, uh I respectfully request to donate three hundred and twenty hours of my accumulated sick time to William Mendoza, foreman of the Highway Department. It's my understanding um that a recent health uh incident may require him to be out of work for an extended pi- time period. I would like to offer this to him to help and would appreciate your consideration of this request. And after her retirement, she wishes to distribute any remainder of her sick time um to anyone who would is in need due to a long-term absence from COVID nineteen or an absence due to a seal- a serious illness or surgery, including Mr. Mendoza, should he need it. Uh s- signed Linda McCarron. And I think um this is another example of why I feel so fortunate to work with our employees because they have big hearts and they care about one another, and it really is in a in a way like a big family, so. Um with that, I will entertain motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we um grant the request of Mrs. Linda McCarron that uh three hundred and twenty hours of her personal accumulated sick leave be made available to William Mendoza, foreman in the Highway Department.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Selectmen Pacheco, your vote.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Mr. Ferry, is there anything we're missing or anything you wanted to touch upon?
I think that that'll do. If you need me, uh give me a text. In case I dawn off.
Dr. Z? Uh Dr. Z, I don't want to tie up Mr. Ferry, but I'm looking at the letter from Mrs. Pacheco. If he hasn't seen it, I think he needs to know what it's about because it's about highways and roads and bike riding.
What I was, yeah, um so it is, Mr. Ferry, it is a letter uh that we got from s- uh concerned resident regarding uh it is a Project Citizen letter. It's from the same program from the schools. And they are basically talking about wanting to have more bike, uh bike trails and things. So what I was gonna do is actually forward this along to you because I wasn't sure if you had seen it. And then also forwarded along to the Trails Committee to Mr. Carvallo. Does that sound good?
Yes, yes, he would have a a stronger rep- response. Yes, there are some uh active trail projects underway as we speak.
Exactly. Selectmen Goulart?
There's more to this letter than trails. She's talking about the safety of students who want to ride their bikes on town roads to school and also walk to school. So I think it's important that this letter be read, and we can forward it as far as to the Trails Committee for recreation, but I would think the immediate concern is the uh uh potential that students can ride bikes in the spring and fall to and from our schools.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we go to correspondent item number thirteen C and discuss that item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh any discussion on this?
Twelve, twelve C, I'm sorry.
I got, I got thirteen C on my agenda.
I think it is thirteen C.
Okay, that's right, because uh the agenda got changed last minute, right?
Hearing uh no further discussion. Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Um I just didn't want, I was just a little, it's not that I didn't want to read the letter. It's that I think it's the first time Mr. Ferry is hearing this, and so for me to read it and then ask him to respond, and he hasn't seen it before is a little bit difficult, but I will read it. It says, Dear Selectmen Zagrafos, Pacheco, and Goulart, I'm reaching out to you, and this is from Evelyn Pacheco, Dayton Middle School, grade eight student. Uh I'm reaching out to you because I completed a school project called Project Citizen. This project is a requirement by the state of Massachusetts for students in grades eight and ten. For this project, students choose a topic in their school, community, et cetera, that they feel is in need of change and write to an important person that they feel could persuade, they could persuade to create change. The topic I have chosen is the po- the policy against walking or riding bikes, skateboards, or skates to school. I feel strongly about this topic for many reasons, some being one, many students feel that riding their bikes is an escape and helps them clear their minds. Two, taking the bus can cause headaches and stress before students even arrive at school. Three, some students' parents don't have the ability to bring them to school every morning. I was one of those. Four, biking to and from school can lift stress from a child and promote mental health. Five, taking, biking requires physical activity, keeping kids in shape, and ultimately promotes body positivity in teenagers. And six, unlike cars and buses, riding bikes to school is good for our environment. For the safety of the students, rules will need to be put in place and strictly enforced. These rules will allow students to ride their bikes or walk to and from school under the allowed circumstances. These circumstances include, but are not limited to, one, ideal weather conditions, meaning it cannot be snowing or raining, and there cannot be any snow or ice on the ground. Two, only allowed in the fall and spring when the weather is ideal for bike riding. For example, children will only be able to ride their bikes if the temperature is over thirty-five degrees Fahrenheit. And three, children must be sent home in the beginning of the school year with a permission slip for their parents to sign that gives them allowance to ride their bike or walk to and from school. Thank you for taking the time out of your busy workday to consider my proposal on why the bike policy at Dayton Middle School should be changed. I hope you will consider all of my reasons and recommendations and hope to hear back from you in the near future. Hope you have a good day, Evelyn Pacheco. So I think this is actually referring to some policy at the school that is outside of the purview and really falls under the school district, so. Selectmen Goulart, what is your interpretation? That's what I'm got.
Yeah, I think I think this letter has got a lot of different things in it. Um the reason I mentioned that I would like uh Mr. Ferry to hear it is because uh obviously the reference. Um I don't know if the student is aware that um with one of the grants that we have and with the work that's been done uh in certain parts of the town, there are now those signs about share the road and bike lanes, so that's one issue. Uh certainly, there's going to have to be involvement of the school department because if they're gonna handle the permission slips, there's also gotta be a place to secure the bikes when they ride them to school. You just can't leave them. And and there certainly it should be secured or they'll disappear. Um so my main thought in having this read is so that the student knows that we got it. We've read it, and I think we need to take it under advisement and send a copy to the school department. Copy to Mr. Ferry. Um and that we um table action as far as any further action on this to uh a future meeting. Uh and when we have responses from the school department and any thoughts Mr. Ferry might have. And uh so that we can incorporate all of all of that in here. Uh but it's truly not all of the school departments, not all of the town, and that's why I said there's a conglomeration of things here that need to be addressed.
And if we also uh C C just the Trails Committee, um because I know it's not explicitly said in here. But if if this policy were to be reevaluated by Dayton Middle School, I think the part that would fall on the town uh is just simply to make it as safe as possible for the kids to bike there. But I know that's not really said in this email explicitly, but um maybe the Trails Committee should be C C'd as well because I know they are kind of working with Mr. Ferry and planning and uh myself as well on different uh ideas.
And I think it's good that included in when we do uh uh respond and when we get feedback and respond, we include all of those, including the Trails Committee, so that the student knows uh we do have the signs, share the road, that the school department's position is and what their role will be and what they're willing to do. And that the town is actively uh providing and will continue to look for more trails and accessibility for recreational bike riding.
Selectmen Pacheco, did, were you trying to say something before I apologized?
Yes, I was, but I think Mrs. Goulart answered my uh my concern. I was wondering why the Trails Committee would be involved in this, but I think she answered that for me.
Do we have any more discussion or are we prepared to make a motion? Oh, sir, you have the floor.
Y- yes, I after reading that letter, listening to it, I I think it's beyond the Trails Committee. I I know the Police Department in the past was involved with training and um the safety aspects. I I would assume they were involved with the policy that the school was drawn, so maybe the Police Department should be carbon on this letter also. But I I have a feeling that's the direction it's going.
I think that's a good idea. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Ferry. Any further discussion? And if not, I will entertain motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take the uh that we table action on the letter uh regarding, uh I'll call it bicycle safety and bicycle policy uh until a future meeting and that we send copies to the school department, the police department, uh the highway department, the Trails Committee, and that we gather information from each group so that we can, even if just just informational uh uh about the availability of the trails, you know, for safe biking. Uh but um I'll leave it at that, that we notify all the, all of the boards and departments that we just mentioned that are involved in 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 making a decision how to do this.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also aye. Mr. Ferry, you better run out of here before we find something else on here.
Thank you all for taking things out of order and moving along.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you. We appreciate it. We have a six fifteen, we're right on schedule, around six fifteen P M. Uh Stacy Carey, our Animal Control Officer and Wags Waiting Animals Get Supports Proposal. And we do have uh Wags owner, do you say owner, president? President, okay. Wags President Supfretato, also a Dayton resident, is here tonight to speak to her proposal. Mrs. Fretato, did you want to start by just apprising the board of the proposal, your idea?
So um basically, in order to bring in any domestic animal, dogs, or cats from out of state, the Mass Department of Agriculture has very strict regulations, and it requires fourteen, forty-eight hours of isolation. So all the towns, many of the towns surrounding us provide that service, and I'm actually in the process of contracting with several of them. Um when that happens, an animal comes from out of state, the rescue pays for that quarantine. Um and so as I'm developing these contracts with every other town, and I'm realizing that we have a brand-new shelter um that often has no animals in it, lucky for us. Um it came to me that perhaps we could do something with the town. Now, it's certainly not gonna generate huge revenue streams, but my proposal is that basically we would uh renovate the one room in the current shelter to meet the Mass Department of Agriculture rules um and regulations. That Wags would fund that renovation and that Wags would then have use of that location in order to provide isolation to out-of-state animals.
Okay.
And then, I mean, I guess I don't, I put a lot more probably in the proposal, but basically my uh the proposal is that the funding, if it weren't cost prohibitive, because again, we have no idea what this would require. I did speak with the Mass Department of Agriculture today yet again. They would send out one of their inspectors to tell us specifically what it would entail. We would then enlist, if we got approval, um an approved contractor, a town-approved contractor to provide that. Wags would fund those renovations. Uh the proposal would be that until we were whole, basically were reimbursed, that the quarantine use, the isolation use, would be cost-neutral, we wouldn't be charged, and then as soon as that renovation were paid back, then the town would be paid every time we had an animal in use in the isolation room. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Um I do, so for everyone, I should have said this first, and I apologize, we got right into the agenda, but this is our new town administrator, Mr. Mike Bullins, first meeting. But this is our new Town Administrator, Mr. Mike Mullin's first meeting. Hi, everyone.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for having me.
And I do want to yield the floor both to you first, Town Administrator Mullin, and also to our Animal Control Officer, Mrs. Ferry, before taking any questions from the board, if that's okay. So, sir, I wanted to give you the floor first. If you had any questions regarding the proposal.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair and Miss Fertado. One of the questions, and I if it's okay, I like to work a little through. So, like, I mean, I think the proposal was great, so and obviously it fills a need. But in terms of the renting or leasing any of the space in the town-owned building, so I just want to make sure that we follow the applicable that we follow the applicable procurement rules, like in terms of actually putting everything up to bid. So, and then any renovations in terms of the donations of any renovations for those renovations. So, we have to make sure that those improvements are done according to prevailing rates because it is a public building as well. So, like, I think offline, if we might be able to have a conversation about just those processes. So, and if the board is interested in moving forward with the concept, what those processes may be, so in order to get the process rolling.
I'm sorry. I think Mrs. Fertado's dog was.
Of course, right, right on cue. She has a very strong opinion about this. Having come, she was actually an in-state dog. Yes, I think in complete disclosure, I don't know as much about the municipal workings as I do about probably dogs and other nonprofit-related issues. So certainly I'd be happy to be, to go through that process, to have conversations of whatever that would entail. I think at this point, I was just looking to see if there was support where we could bring in the Mass Department of Agriculture even to tell us what those renovations would look like. I've spoken with several different people at Mass Department of Ag. Each time I do, I get a completely different answer about how specific that needs to be. And in speaking with several of the owners and other municipalities that have these quarantine and isolation sites, what they've been told they need to do, also behaviors from town to town. So, I mean, it could be that it's cost prohibitive. If they want us to invest thirty thousand dollars, I mean, WAGS cannot do that. So, I need some direction from them first, but this was just really the initial step to see if it was even something worth asking.
Okay, thank you.
Animal Control Officer Ferry?
We have, myself and Sue have talked about this in length more than once. I think it's a good thing for us as a town, if it can be done, as just to show support to the rescues. She does a lot for me. I try to do as much for her. If I have dogs I can't place, she's usually the first one I call. And we usually, we have had animals in the recent past that came into the shelter, spent two hours in the shelter, and was in a foster home. So, I think if we can help get other dogs moving, it would be great for us as a shelter, and the shelter will be used because it's, as she said, it's not used as much as other shelters are, and that's a good thing for us. So, I, when we decided that we were going to bring this to you, it's just in the development stages. I mean, we may get in there, and they may say, you know what? One, we can't use the room for whatever reason, or it's going to cost this amount of money, and it won't happen. But I think just to start the conversation, I did talk about this with the previous town administrator, and she's, you know, she says it sounds like a good thing, but again, we have to go through the processes, and we know that.
So, my thought, and then I want to hear from my colleagues, of course, is that I'm totally fine with us kicking it off in terms of seeing, like, having Mass Department of Agriculture rep come down, getting an idea of the room. Is this feasible? Is this possible? Because I think any conversation after that, if it's not possible, is a moot point, a moot conversation that we kind of don't even need to have. So, that, those are my thoughts, and I'll yield the floor to my colleagues.
Yes, so I think you've answered this question in your letter, Miss Fertado, and I think it's great what you're trying to do. If Dayton has to quarantine a dog on its own, a dog from Dayton, we get precedent on this, right? We get to use that facility first before you would have an opportunity to use that.
Yes, my proposal was that the town always trumps the rescue. What I heard today in my conversation with Mass Department of Agriculture is that both should be allowed in the building simultaneously, but in separate locations. Because if they approve WAGS, for instance, to do isolation, I should have twenty-four-hour access, apparently. There are regulations about that, too. And it should not preclude the town from quarantine. But again, it goes back to really needing the inspectors to tell us, so what does that mean? Now are they telling us we need three separate rooms? Do they all need double egress, you know, fire codes? Like everything else, it could be very cumbersome, but at least if we could begin the conversation, we could see on what that would entail. And, you know, of course, I have thirty ideas on things we could do at that shelter after this. So, if we're able to be successful and open the door a little bit, I think there are other potential revenue streams for the town using, you know, potentially using that location, whether it's, you know, dog training and puppy classes or things that WAGS would like to see begin, you know, in the area. It would at least get us, you know, marching forward with that.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the work you do with rescue animals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Selakmin Gulart, you have the floor.
Yes. I'm willing to make, I'm going to make a motion, and I will, in discussion, I'll have a comment. I'm moved that we refer this matter to Mr. Mullin and who will work with Mrs. Ferry and Mrs. Fertado to gather the information necessary regarding the town's involvement and to report back to the board for future action, if in fact the town can take action on this.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from anyone on this?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. And if we can do it with, within all the rules and regulations we have to follow, I would certainly support it.
Thank you, Selakmin Gulart. I feel the same way. Hearing no further discussion, Selakmin Pacheco.
Aye.
Selakmin Gulart?
Aye.
And Selakmin Zagrafos is also an aye. And do we have anything else before you leave or depart, Mrs. Fertado, Mrs. Ferry? We're good?
Dr. Z?
Yes.
I'm going to slip this in because I mentioned it before, and it came up today at MMA, MMA, and I did hear from Representative Hadad. At the last meeting, I mentioned the Beagle Bill. The Beagle Bill has been refiled. It is now, the number is House H-1940. It was refiled by Representative Dubois. Representative Hadad has signed on to support it. This bill will allow healthy animals that complete their their service as medical test animals to be adopted out. Statistics show that up to as many as sixty thousand dogs and twenty thousand cats are put down each year. And many of these animals are healthy, and it's not only beagles, it's just that beagles are the majority of the dogs that are used, but there are also labs and other dogs. So, if this is something that you would like to support, get in touch with your state rep, whether it's Rep. Hadad or Rep. Dubois who filed this. A number of states have similar bills, and there is also potential federal legislation. So, I'm just plugging the Beagle Bill today. Thank you.
Thank you, Selakmin Gulart. Is that something you want? Did we vote last week, last week? Did we vote on the twenty-fourth of February on that? Or did you just make an update?
I just mentioned it because I had sent the email to Representative Hadad and because I couldn't find it, but it was, it had been filed, and then the end of the year came, and you know, if they don't act on it, everything sort of gets erased. So, she looked into it for me and gave me that information. I read. It's not the kind of bill that MMA gets behind. There is no committee that handles those kinds of things, but they did allow me to make the announcement there. And quite often, when we have our Zoom meetings, some people are in their homes and you see their pets. So, I know we have.
You're here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you, Mrs. Fertado and Mrs. Ferry, as always.
All very much.
Next on the agenda, we have a six twenty-five, still on time, with our Health Department, Mr. Pilling and Mrs. Grassi. Hello, team.
Hello.
For an update on contact tracing slash vaccinations. And then if it's okay, Mr. Pilling, I was going to suggest moving out of order once your update is completed to the Pandemic Task Force update and loop in the Town Administrator and maybe have that discussion while you're here, if that's okay.
I'm by me.
Sorry, that happened, that feedback happens because you're both like in the same building, basically. Sorry. So, I will yield the floor for an update on contact tracing slash vaccinations. And I know we didn't ask for anything comprehensive, but just like a summary of maybe what has been going on since the last meeting on February twenty-fourth, please?
Sure. I don't know why.
Are you in the meeting twice, Mr. Pilling?
With different computers. How about now? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Can you co-host me so I can share my screen?
Absolutely.
Share the Board of Health Office one, please.
I'll set.
Nope. It's not letting me do it yet. Say Board of Health Office, not me.
Oh, okay. Give me one sec. My apologies.
There's no camera.
Why there's a loop. Okay, now it makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. So, just so everybody knows, this is the one-year anniversary of COVID. It was on March thirteenth of twenty-twenty when we shut down the schools. So, to date, in Dayton, we've had over six hundred cases. Approximately eight percent of the population has tested positive for COVID through the year. The number of cases has been dropping. You see in yellow is what Mrs. Grassi and I have been doing, and you can see the numbers kind of peaked, and they came back down. They seem to be kind of holding steady. For a couple of weeks there, we were getting like zero, one case a day. It was pretty good. Lately, now we're back up to two or three cases a day. It's getting a little worrisome why it's kind of coming back up. But we still seem to have clusters of family events. We're not seeing it people's offices or sports. It seems to be family gatherings where they seem to spread the events. So, that's it in general terms. At the last meeting, Mr. Pacheco asked that we identify about how many calls we're making, and it's kind of hard because we don't necessarily keep track of them all, but not this past week, but the week before was over forty calls, and this week that we're in is about thirty calls. That includes callbacks to people who are to release them out of quarantine, calling them to tell them they're in quarantine, calling and tell them they're positive. And it's about that. We also get other calls for information. We're getting a lot of calls now for vaccines and stuff like that, but that's it in general terms. The other thing that's rolling out is the state is looking to deal with in-home vaccinations. And this is, Mr. Mullin can probably help weigh in on this. Do we want to get into this now, or do you want to wait till later?
He's asking you, Mr. Mullin.
So, yeah, no, I think if we move into it now, if the board is agreeable.
Okay. Well, first off, I will say that the state has a two-on-one, which I know you're going to be announcing later. But this is to help people who don't have any internet access. So, you can call them, and there's people on the other end that use the internet to make the appointments for you. And again, we'll be talking about that a little bit later. So, what the state's rolling on now is for in-home vaccinations in your town, and there are two options. Option number one is that the town of Dayton would take care of everybody who's a shut-in in town. Option number two is that the state will come in and do the vaccines and administer them. The possible, you still have to enter all the data into the system. Do you want to? Like, no? So, we're not really set up to do the vaccines because when we tried to get it set up, it was, it's a difficult process, but the state getting the vaccines has been problematic. We would have to set up all sorts of agreements and everything else. And it doesn't seem to make the most sense for the town of Dayton. It seems to make sense to have the state do the vaccines. I will say, if you look at the last line on this, it's not even starting until March twenty-second, but they want to do this with the Johnson-Johnson vaccine because it's one shot. They don't want to have to go to people's houses twice. So, it probably won't be until April that they'll be taking care of these people. The good news is that these people, if they're staying at home, they're not necessarily out in the community and spreading or getting it. The people that are coming to the houses are generally the home managers and the nurses and such who should have already been vaccinated. So, these people are, I want to say are protected, but obviously, they are generally dealing with people who are in a better place. But it is a program, and so the two options that the town, well, the town has to decide which option we want to do, whether we want the state to do the vaccines or whether we want Dayton, presumably it would be the EMTs through the Fire Department. I don't know if McGee's here. But we've spoken with the chief, and the same thing I'm saying, it would be too problematic to probably set it up at this point in time to handle such a small portion of the population. So then we get into option two, which would be we partner with the state where the state takes care of driving to the houses and giving the shots, but whether or not the Board of Health talks to all the people, finds out who these people are and identifies them, and enters that information into the state database, or whether we just get the information to people so they can call the state, and somebody at the state will do the data entry for them. And I think I'll stop there and let people ask questions.
Mr. Pilling, I guess my only question is for option one, which would be local Board of Health administers the vaccine to the homebound residents. Wouldn't we, wouldn't the town of Dayton have to? We don't have vaccines, so like, we're not getting any sent to us. So, wouldn't we have to like start that whole process before we're even able to do that if we were to choose option one?
You can speak.
Hi, Brett. Sorry about that. So, option one, it wouldn't be the Board of Health administering the vaccine. It would be either our EMTs, the Fire Department, like, it wouldn't actually be us. It would be more a town-wide program. So, the option is either the town can handle it or the state will handle it.
No, I understood that, but my question is, we don't, we're not currently set up. We don't even have a request in to get a vaccine sent to the town of Dayton. So, my question is, that would, that would in and of itself take time, would it not? So, it just seems to me, I guess, like, option two is just the most realistic. Time permitting, I guess, is what I'm thinking. But I do want to hear from the Town Administrator and also from my two colleagues.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, and I agree with exactly what you just mentioned. One of the things that I just want to make sure the board and the public really understands here so is that for the last four weeks or so, the town, until the state, had actually changed the implementation, the rollout of the vaccines. The town was in a really good spot and really working towards actually having a local vaccine option. But in mid to late February, the like, the state had evolved in its implementation and the rollout. So, that's why, so I think we have the infrastructure challenges that we have now. We were basically at the eighty-five VR line. So, and now, oh, and then as a result, we had to regroup as a town. But I want the. But I want the public at home to know, we as a town, the fire department, the Board of Health, the town administration, it was really working on a solution that could fit in Dayton. You know, and we still are, we're still examining options every day. But I mean, the state like is evolving as well. So we'd had to adapt as well. But to your point, so I think to option one, like I think we would have infrastructure challenges in making it happen. And I do think option two really is the best of both worlds. So we'd be able to have local input. You know, we would have the Board of Health and maybe other departments working to identify who the residents are, who could benefit from this program. So and then communicate that information to the state. So we'll make sure that was working for Dayton residents. So, so I agree with Mr. Pilling. Like I think option two is really a hybrid option. Oh, you know, that make sure we're involved in working to serve our residents. But also at this point, the state always the is leading all the efforts on the vaccination front. So and this would make sure that their tools are used to help Dayton residents as well. So yes, I, this is it. I agree with Mr. Pilling's recommendation.
I want to get the thoughts and questions of my two colleagues. And then I also wanted to ask a question related to the COD Commission, but I will do that after. Selectmen Pacheco or Selectmen Goulart?
Yes. So it looks like even if we take option two, the local Board of Health will have some involvement, that they will be making the referrals. We'll gather the list of those that are homebound, that can't go out and and get the vaccination on their own. And then we refer those to the state. Is that correct?
Yes, that is how we understand it, Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you.
Would the town on option two, would the town make the contact for the individual? My concern is that many elderly people do not want strangers coming to their homes for any reason. And they either won't open the door or they don't really want them in their homes. And so it would seem there would have to be some kind of local contract, a contact that an elderly person might have somebody in the home with them who, when the person shows up to give them the vaccination, you know, there'd be somebody there that would kind of facilitate it. So we, I had spoken to Mr. Mullen about this when we had a brief discussion. My other thought was, will under option two, where you have congregant living like Lincoln Village? And I don't know how many people up there have been fully vaccinated. But if there are some people that haven't been vaccinated, would this program allow somebody from the state to go in and, for example, set up at the meeting room? And the residents there, that we would have a list and say the following residents of Lincoln Village I hear to get their immunizations?
This program is specifically to deal with people who cannot move. They're like non-ambulatory. It takes like two people to get them out of the house. It's yeah, they're bed bound generally. So that's not the program. That program you're talking about was for elderly and affordable housing, which that doesn't necessarily classify as. So that's why that didn't happen. Not that we can't try and get them something, but this program specifically is for people who can't leave their house.
So would that include, for example, patients at the Novichot?
If some of them can't get out on their own.
There is, there is, there is a wing where they care for elderly and infirm residents. And the rooms are set up like hospital rooms. That's my only thought. And they may have been able to take care of it themselves, but, but the last time I was in that wing, there were several people that pretty much are in their beds most of the time because they're very elderly and they have health issues.
So here's a list of questions that would be asked of the people. And it goes on and on about, you know, basically if somebody can give you a ride to the vaccine site, then you're not eligible.
Okay.
You have to be unable to get there on your own. So and this is part of what the screening process would be and whether it's us of the state doing it and having these conversations with these people to ask them all these questions.
Okay.
So and again, this is still, you see at the bottom of the screen, it says confidential for policy development. This is still kind of, they're still rolling it out. They're in the soft opening now. It's not till March 22nd that this actually would go live.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are all good questions and they bring me to my next question. And that's why I love a discussion because I didn't start out with this question. It sounds like you, like the town of Dayton, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pilling, the town of Dayton has the responsibility to identify or refer who is homebound. And then the state decides on this screening portal or questionnaire, who's eligible. So I guess my question is, is it up to the town of Dayton to know who to refer, identify and refer who may be eligible?
Yes.
So who's going to do that? I mean, we've had this question before. We've, I've had this question with the COD Coordinator, Mr. Gale, who I do want to weigh in on this in just a moment. But we don't have, to the best of my knowledge, some kind of a list of these people, these individuals who might be eligible. Sorry, I should be more articulate when I speak. My apologies. And I guess my question is, who's going to, who's going to be the entity or the individuals who are going to be responsible for comprising this list or identifying these populations? And is this, is this at all in line with the Commission on Disability assisting with the 211 hotline? Those are my questions. I know they're loaded questions and I know they have complicated answers, so I want everyone to digest it. And then I do want to hear from Mr. Gale at all as well. Excuse me, not at all.
So this is Mr. Gale. Do you want me to chime in a little bit right now or go back?
If you don't mind, sir. Like, is this something you could even help with?
So, so let me explain a little bit more in other aspects of this as well. I have been in touch with Mass Office of Disability and with the State Department of Public Health with regard to the potentials on how this program would work. And piggybacking on some of what Mr. Pilling said. First of all, the onus is overall going to be on the towns or the cities or the villages, whatever, to identify who the potential residents are because number one, the Commonwealth doesn't know. Number two, the assumption is also that the vast majority of these potential residents receiving the services are not going to have their individual ability to contact the Commonwealth and do this independently. So it is going to involve and expected for the most part to involve a local source to be able to do it. The other part of it is how is it going to be administered? I'm only referring here to option two and I want to keep that in mind. Option two, they're not sure yet exactly who the local contracts are going to be given to for administration. So for example, they're looking at South Coast Elder Services through their VNA program as a potential source, because a lot of those VNA folks already visit a lot of these same potential shut-ins in their homes to provide varying services. So in fact, it may be the VNA who visits Jonathan every week, who's the person who's going to actually administer it. These folks are already vaccinated. They've already got the equipment. They've already got the gear and so forth. It'll be a matter of, you know, how they're going to keep the vaccinations depending upon what vaccination, whether it has to be cold, refrigerated, et cetera, et cetera. So that's potentially where the contracts are going to go to the VNA of Elder Services who will already provide the source services as far as reaching out to the individuals. And Dr. Z, you're right. This is something we've been discussing for the last couple of months now. It's my understanding that in speaking to the Council on Aging, speaking to the Board of Health, speaking to the police and the fire departments, there's no list as of now as to individuals who are self-identified in Dayton as being shut-ins. There may be a few known individuals. There may be a few known people who are receiving VNA type of services, but there's not an actual list that we've been able to find or put together or hear from any of the departments that currently exist. So for example, if Mr. Pilling, as noted earlier, is receiving phone calls from folks, if those folks are indicating that they meet the shut-in criteria, because we are the COD Commission on Disability and we've got myself as the coordinator and a series of volunteers, we are in the position and I think should be in the position to spearhead or at least work with the Board of Health to identify potential shut-ins, get the words out through the website, get the information out once it becomes available. Because if we do it prematurely, we all know what could potentially happen with residents and assumptions. So we need to get more and get the packet put together of material, identify these questions that are going to be asked, that are somewhat going to be changing. This is still fluid, actually. This is, this is not finalized yet. Having said that, the scheduling is not finalized yet. Operationally is not finalized yet. But I think the COD is in a position to be able to assist residents with the scheduling, with the doing, with the appointments, with the contact back with the state. Because we've also got, as I said, we've got Mass Office of Disability with us. If we need other state agencies that represent elder affairs, elder services, MO, the Mass Office of Deaf and Hard of Hearing. You've got individuals who are shut-ins who are developmental delays. So it's not just seniors. There are developmental delayed individuals, for example, who are considered shut-ins in some cases, not all. You know, they do have to be housebound and that's a key factor in this one. This also, and I know we're going to talk about the 211 component later and what can be provided and so forth. So I don't want to get into that aspect of it right now. I'm going to stay away from that until, until later. But I think one of the things we would want to do is work in conjunction and get the information as much as possible, as I said, from the Council on Aging, from the Board of Health, from the different chiefs, so that we know potentially who we're looking at. And then hopefully, once we also get information out to the website through the town and Facebook, you know, we can get others who are going to call in or people who will call in and say, I know that so-and-so is a shut-in. You know, we may also ultimately need to be in touch with South Coast Elder Services and their VNA system so that they can help identify potential residents who are shut-ins as well. So I know I've given a lot here as well. I do think we're in a position to coordinate it and put it together and work with the Board of Health and, you know, collectively do this.
So I think where we're all in agreement is we, we as the town will do option two. That's the most, makes the most sense. Is that correct? I'm just trying to start from a place of, we don't have all the answers right now. We don't logistically know how we're going to identify these populations, who's going to make the calls, who's going to be helping with the screening. But what we do know is option two is the, the better option. Is that how everyone feels?
I think so.
That's what I, that's what I think is the, is the ADA Coordinator, yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So we don't have to have all the answers tonight, but I think what we could do, if the board is amenable, I don't know if a vote is required, but we could, you know, make a motion and go with option two at the very least.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we investigate option two as the best option for the town of Dayton for vaccination of people who are unable to visit vaccination sites. And that we, we put this on the agenda for future discussion.
Before I second that, I think we have to make a decision whether we're going to do option one, option two by March 12th, which is before our next meeting. So I, I don't think it's an investigation. I think we have to go forward with option two, which I think is the best option.
Okay, Mrs. Brady, strike that motion. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we select option two as the one most viable for vaccination program for individuals who cannot go out to get vaccinated.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Under discussion, Mr. Pilling, I assume that going forward, all conversation, I shouldn't say all, that most of the conversations that are going to happen in the next, I don't know, week or two or whenever this program needs to be launched, will occur at the level of the Emergency Preparedness Committee?
Well, we talked with my Mr. Mullen about that today and it was felt that the pandemic task force might be the better place for it. Because a part of it is the fluidity and the speed at which stuff is coming out to get meetings posted and everything else. It gets very difficult.
Yeah.
And the pandemic task force, obviously, we can invite anybody to come to it and get it done.
Correct.
Emergency preparedness involves some people like the Highway Department and the Police Department, which aren't necessarily involved in the discussion. So.
And also it's not the, okay, I understand. The pandemic task force doesn't have, doesn't have a quorum. It's not, okay. I understand. I get it. It's not, it's not like a committee like the subcommittee is for the emergency preparedness. That makes sense to me. I just wanted us to understand like that the actual components will come together from those discussions, not you just needed general guidance from the Board of Selectmen, like a decision from the town. Understood.
So yeah, like on that note, Mr. Chair, if I may, like, and I think to Mr. Gale's point, one of the things in terms of reaching out and the outreach of like the town in the coming weeks on this effort, we're going to need it to be inclusive. So I mean, and to that end, like involving the Commission on Disabilities, involving the Council on Aging, for example, you know, like we need to make sure we're reaching as many Dayton residents as possible to who are eligible for this. So we are going to I'll be doing outreach to the strawberry vine and other things to make sure, you know, and if residents at home, like they know anybody who they can think of right now when they watch the meeting, you know, to even start thinking about reaching out to the Board of Health so we can start compiling those lists.
And last thing, not, not just that, but also, so those are great, like strawberry vine, excellent. Absolutely needs to be in there. But also I think we're overlooking just a simple email to the Cable Television Committee to ask them to run something on Channel 9 on a loop. So it's just, because a lot of people do watch Channel 9 and, and watch that programming, especially for reruns. So I think we might want to have that on our radar as well. But I think this is great and I just wanted to have us all on the same page as to who will be, who will be the, the, I don't know, custodians of, of this program going forward. So.
Mr. Town Administrator, this is Mr. Gale. I just wanted to let you know, if you did not know yet, that the COD, myself specifically, is a member of the pandemic task force. So I will and should be involved in these meetings. So we can, you know, make sure that we're proactive with, with the Department of Health on this.
Thank you, Mr. Gale.
Sorry. Mr. Woods, just if you don't mind, just your name and your address, sir.
Robert Woods, 158 Chase Street. And I just wanted to let you all know that I received a message today from the Providence VA. They are giving out COVID vaccines to any veteran without an appointment. Just walk into building number 32. If you are not in the system, just bring your veteran's ID or your DD214. Don't worry about them running out. They have thousands of doses. So for any veteran, whether or not you're in the VA healthcare system or not, as long as you have a veteran's ID or it says veterans on your mass driver's license or a copy of your DD214, they will give you a shot in building number 32. And I'll also send this to Todd and to the veteran's agent tomorrow, but I just got this today. And it's a good thing. I received both my shots so far, so.
Mr. Woods, could you also send that to Mrs. Brady and Mrs. Kerwin? And we don't mind including that on like our upcoming announcements as well?
Absolutely.
And Mr. Woods, if you could send it to Mr. Gale as well. I believe you have my town address. We have COD
Yes, I do, sir.
Individuals who would like to know that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Woods, is that the Providence VA?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, just know that if you cross the state lines in Rhode Island, then you have to quarantine for 14 days when you get back.
Touche. Any further discussion under this?
Dr. Z, one other thought. The kind of notifications that will go out in the strawberry vine and other locations. If you print up something like a small eight and a half by 11 notice, they can be left at either both, not either, both post offices and they will publicly post those. And especially, I put it on Town Let ahead, whether it's Board of Health or whatever, and just deliver it to the post office and ask them and they will post them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we had a motion in a second. There's no further discussion. How do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. That was a good discussion. Thank you, everyone. And if you don't mind, if there could be some sort of a update, I know. update, I know, Mr. Pilling, you do the updates on the contact tracing or vaccinations. I don't expect you to be at every meeting, certainly not, but if you could also include any pertinent updates regarding this program, option two for the homebound Dayton residents, we would appreciate any updates that the the pandemic task force may have going forward. Thank you, sir. Anything else? Mrs. Grassi, Mr. Pilling? All right.
Not on the vaccine. I think that covers the vaccine, so.
Okay. And what we had something else to discuss, which was immunizations.
Yes. So, yes, so thank you, Mr. Chair. As you, so as you and the general public may have heard, actually, beginning on the twenty fifth of February of last month, the Governor, Governor Baker, he announced at beginning March first that the state would be returning to 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 step two of phase three, which which would allow the capacity limits across all sectors across all sectors to be raised to fifty percent of the capacity. And the Governor had also mentioned, he announced on the twenty fifth the tentative start of step one of phase four to begin on the twenty second of this month. So and that would actually increase beginning on the twenty second of March, that would increase the gathering limits in public settings to a hundred people indoors and a hundred and fifty people outdoors. At the same time, we the Fire Chief, the Board of Health and like a number of departments in town along with the Building Commissioner have been closely following Dayton's status. So in the in the percentage of positivity of tests performed. So as I believe has already been announced in town, Dayton is now in the yellow group. And it continues really to make generally oh, like a lot of progress in oh, like in having a lower percentage of positivity of tests performed. So with all that said, the pandemic task force met on the first of March.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, point of order?
Yes.
Are we on Agenda Item nine A?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion that we take Agenda Item nine A out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is an aye. Your point of order is withheld, whatever the word is.
Upheld. Upheld, upheld. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Mullin, but I was looking at my agenda and I couldn't find you. Anyhow, we're cool.
Thank you very much, Selectmen Goulart. Like, it's very apropos that I'm out of order in my first meeting. So anyways, so as I was saying, like the pandemic, the pandemic task force, we met on the first of March. So and based on the information that I just provided, the task force recommended that the Board of Selectmen vote to resume like in-person meetings or in some cases hybrid in-person Zoom meetings, which adhere to the capacity limits. So also along the same lines, the task force is also recommending for a conversation about the reopening to Town Hall to the public beginning on the fifth of April, twenty twenty one. And this timeline would also allow for the completion of the renovation work being done in the hallway of the first floor of Town Hall and our our conversation about the reopening of Town Hall, like relating to like I believe in like last summer, where the fall, there was an appointment only a type of provision as well. Like all those things, the things that the task force I actually thought, based on the updated guidelines and the reopening plans, that would be very helpful for all of us to have a conversation about at this point. So with that, I'll turn it over to any questions, Mr. Chair.
You're muted.
Sorry. The two things we, thank you, the two things we need to discuss and possibly act on are the Board of Selectmen resuming in-person meetings at Old Town Hall and then separately reopening to the public effective April fifth?
Yes.
Okay, I will open this up for just, I just wanted us to set the scene. I will open this up for a discussion with my colleagues, Selectmen Pacheco.
Yes, I would like to have our next select board meeting at Old Town Hall. It all depends on Mrs. Goulart. That will be her last. As it stands right now, anyway, her last select board meeting, and I think we all, the select board, Karen, Mike, we all should be together with her at that meeting. So I'm I'm in favor of that. If Mrs. Goulart is in favor of that, I do think it still has to be Zoom. And we're still going, I think we should still limit it to up to ten people in that in that room. And I think the discussion about opening the Town Hall on April fifth might be, we might want to hold off on that just to make sure the renovations are going to be done. So that we hold off on that until March twenty fourth and make our final decision on that on that day, just to make sure the renovations are complete. But I would be interested in Mrs. Goulart's position on having a meeting at Old Town Hall.
Yeah, I fully, I fully support that. I mean, I was hoping that we'd hear something from the state and that there would be a further relaxing of the the rules and that. And so absolutely, if we can, if we can have our next meeting, I was gonna say our next meeting live, well, I mean, people in person up to the limit we can have, and then we'll have the combination hybrid meeting with others who can zoom in. So I, I'm all in favor of that. I think it would be great.
And it and it can be live. My understanding is cable is all set to have that meeting live. So we can, like, we can have a live meeting from from Old Town Hall. I talked to Dave.
You mean, you mean live from Channel Nine?
Yes, I talked to Dave and he said it's all, it's all set for that. I do. Yeah, I do ask that if we are going to meet together, that we wear our masks. We can take them off if we want when we speak, but other than that, I think we ought to keep our mask on.
Are we gonna, we're gonna distance at the table like we did, right?
Yes, but they still, they still want you to wear a mask.
Okay, I, you know, I'm really glad that we're having this conversation. I had the same thought. For I had asked, for anyone who didn't know, I had asked Mrs. Kerwin probably a few weeks ago, when Selectmen Goulart announced her intention not to run for reelection, that we present her with a certificate of recognition for her years of service. I'm glad that we're having this conversation because I had wanted to be able to present it to her in person and not just show her something on a screen. You know, at her house. So I'm really happy to hear this. Selectmen Pacheco, I'm totally fine if we want to wait until March twenty fourth to have the conversation about old about Town Hall reopening to the public. I did speak, just so you know about this, earlier with Town Administrator Mullin. And I expressed, you know, obviously, we all want Town Hall to be open to the public. I just expressed that we do it in a similar fashion to the way we safely did it before, where we had a brief transition period where it was by appointment only for a couple of weeks. And then, because I really think the same thing is going to play out, more people are going to get vaccinated, but also the weather is going to get warmer. And the numbers are going to continue to go down, I think, for the summer, just like it did last year. So those are my thoughts, and I'm glad that it seems like we'll be together next week. Excuse me, two weeks.
Mrs. Goulart.
I'm sorry, Doctor Z, and my other thought is if we could ask Mr. Pilling to take a look at the room and the setup, to make sure that the setup meets the requirements for whatever rules are in place at the the night of the meeting. That's what we have done with Stormwater. He makes sure that everything is set up and and as I've said before to members, take a seat and don't move anything. So we're okay. Just just so there won't be any concerns about you know, if not proper, so.
I just want to be clear before we take a vote and I entertain motions, Town Administrator Mullin.
Yes.
When you brought this up, are you expecting that the Board of Selectmen is going to vote only for the Board of Selectmen's meetings? Like, are you, is this vote? Is this vote for other committees or commit? I feel like that decision should be up to them. I'm not going to force conservation. I'm just using them as an example to come into an in-person meeting if they prefer to do it via Zoom. I think the conversation that we're having, my understanding is that it's for the Board of Selectmen.
So, yes, no, and I guess, and I agree with your point. This is for the Board of Selectmen. I think generally speaking, like if there are other boards and committees that want to talk about returning to in-person meetings at this point, based on this conversation, you know, Old Town Hall will be more available going forward. So but, yes, we want like ideally, every board and commission to do what really works best for them. We don't want to force this on anybody.
So we did get some public input, so I just wanted to read it. And then I just wanted to clarify. So we received a message from Resident Joe Keen, and he just wrote that he wants meetings to continue in the Zoom format, so citizen participation won't be limited. And Resident Leonard Hull also said that he agreed, and my understanding with the, and I actually agree as well. My understanding is that we would do like a hybrid. So like, if you, if someone didn't want to come into the meeting and maybe wanted to give input, they could still do it on Zoom. We have a TV in Old Town Hall where we put the Zoom screen on. So they can see the board and we can see, you know, just like we're looking at Zoom tonight. But it still gives people the option, like if they want to come in and that, you know, they're under the capacity limit, that they can come in as well. So it will be hybrid was my understanding.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Pilling?
Yes, so while you guys were doing the early part in the agenda, cable was upstairs and trying to set it up and play with it, and I asked them about it. And what they believe they can do and they need to practice with it is the cameras that are up on the ceiling that they're taping people, anybody talking would be shown live on Zoom and on Channel Nine at the same time. And if somebody wants to speak that's not in the room, it would be put up on the TV screen so that everybody in the room would see who's talking. So it's, it is a very, it would be a very good hybrid of the two. That's the intent. They said they're going to be in here over the weekend trying to work it out and play with it to make sure it does work, because obviously, that would be the best way to to roll it out, because obviously, there's more than ten people here tonight. There's twenty nine. So they would have to be from home and the meeting would only be for certain people to be allowed in there. Obviously, we would, we would have to stop people. And you got to remember that there's going to be two people from cable in the room. So if the capacity is ten, it becomes eight.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, no, it's important to keep the hybrid format. It's so curious that we're having this conversation. It's a good conversation to have. I've been watching how other towns are having their meetings. And for example, Swansea, which our town administrator, former town administrator Mallory Aronstein is the town administrator in right now. I think they've been having in-person meetings throughout. They don't have any public input. Now, I personally, my thought is public input is probably the most important part of the meeting, because we're literally here to represent people and we need to care, we need to care what what everyone thinks and what everyone has to say, and everyone needs a seat at the table. So I'm really happy that we we are valuing the public input to the point where, no matter what decision we make, public input needs to be at the center and needs to still occur. So I'm, I really applaud my colleagues for, I've seen towns that don't even allow the residents into the Zoom meeting. They just can only watch it from a live stream. And if you want to contact your representatives, you have to like write them and hope that they read it at the meeting. So I totally agree with the public input we've received, that public input is the most important part, and we should retain a citizen participation aspect of it. We did receive two comments. I just want to read them from Dayton resident Jen Duchkowski. I would hope that the hybrid format would continue long after the restrictions of the pandemic are lifted. As the hybrid format breaks down many barriers to participation, such as child or elder care accessibility, mobility and transportation, to name a few, to which Dayton resident Chris Chandonay, please keep this indefinitely. And Mr. Joe Keen, Dayton resident, said he agrees with Jen. I agree as well. And I want to reiterate to our Dayton residents in attendance and anyone who will watch this meeting, and I don't mean to belabor the point, but the Board of Selectmen values the public input so much that that's why we installed the TV at Old Town Hall, so that we can have this hybrid Zoom format, remote participation aspect to our meetings. And I think our intention wasn't that we would just have the TV there for a couple of months, and once the pandemic's lifted, we'll take it off the wall and we're all back to in-person. I think I think it's a small thing to ask that we continue this format. So I totally agree with everyone, and I don't know what my colleagues think.
Yeah, I agree also, as long as Mr. Mullin is the one that runs the Zoom meetings, because I have no idea. And it would be a cluster.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin.
Challenge accepted, Mr. Pacheco.
I agree. I think it's a great idea.
Does anyone have anything else? And I mean, just public, I know we have, public has strong opinions on the hybrid aspect. If anyone has any more input, feel free to unmute yourself and just your name and your address, please, on this topic. Okay, hearing none. Did we have a motion to?
No, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen stop meeting in person at Old Town Hall beginning on March twenty fourth twenty twenty one, and that'd be a hybrid meeting Zoom as well as live cable. And we limit the number of people at this time anyway to ten people.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just so it's understood, we're going to wear our mask. That's all.
Yep.
I didn't have, I didn't include that in the motion.
Yep, I will.
Yep, thank you.
I will, no worries. Hearing no further discussion, Selectmen Pacheco, sir.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye, and I want to thank the public for their excellent comments and a good discussion. I also will entertain motions to take the reopening of Town Hall to the public under advisement until March twenty fourth, twenty twenty one.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. I do just want to say, public, if you'd like to contact us about this issue, feel free to send either of us an email, or you can email the Board of Selectmen at dytynma.gov. Karen, don't be mad, I'm sorry. You know, we we care what people think and we want to know what they think about it. Selectmen Pacheco, your votes, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Pilling?
Oh, I just wanted to say, Mr. Pacheco's motion was to open for Selectmen's meetings to be live on March twenty fourth. I just want to know about any other boards in town and committees and when they're allowed to go in live.
Do you want to speak to your motion, Selectmen Pacheco?
My motion was just for the Board of Selectmen, but I personally am not opposed to other boards and other committee members and other employees meeting together. As long as they're doing the ten, you know, six feet apart, wearing a mask, up to ten people in that room. And if it's being taped, it'd also be a hybrid Zoom meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we notify town boards, committees, commissions, that we have approved live meetings at Old Town Hall with up to ten people present. And that it be a hybrid format, format, and that all of the regulations relative to spacing and mask wearing be observed during the meeting. And and that those boards, at their own discretion, can determine whether or not they want to have a live meeting or continue with Zoom meetings.
But that I think this is covered in your motion, but that they have, they should be doing hybrid.
Yeah, I did say that, that if they decide to be, what I said was if they want to have a meeting where there are people present, there must be the hybrid option. The Zoom has got to be available.
Okay.
So is this an amendment to my motion? Because we haven't voted on my motion yet, I don't believe.
Thought we did.
No, we didn't, not yet. Mr. Pilling, Mr. Pilling had had input, so I didn't get to.
No, you voted on the Board of Selectmen meeting, then you went into the next vote about the something else. It was a second motion after it.
The Town Hall opening.
The Town Hall opening. That was the motion.
That's right. So, all right, so there's a motion on the floor now relative to notifying the other boards and committees, so.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And we'll just have this via memo like we did last time, when we closed it. And we can do that on letterhead. Selectmen Pacheco, your vote, sir?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. We had a motion and a second also to take under advisement the discussion to reopen Town Hall to the public to March 24th. Do we have any further discussion on that? Hearing nuns, Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. And I, again, just want to thank Mr. Pilling. I want to thank Mrs. Grassi. And I want to thank all the public for your, giving us their thoughts on this important topic. So, thank you all. And you too, Mr. Mullen.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Next on the agenda, and I apologize, Mrs. Brady, I couldn't find the actual spreadsheet anywhere for the vacation slash, yeah, vacation buyback. But I actually want to start this conversation off, since our town accountant isn't here, by giving the floor to our town administrator, Mr. Mullen, and just hear if he has any thoughts, opinions, questions, comments, concerns, based on his experience as the Norfolk County Administrator, and also just a selectman in Rockland. I'm sure he knows other select people in other towns and municipalities. And what are your thoughts on this?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Like, and I promise, I think the last time I spoke, you could only see my forehead. So, now I want you to see my whole face. But one of the things, I mean, in terms of, I think, oh, you know, this conversation happened last month, and it was aimed to be revisited tonight. Like, and when the board met last night, the outstanding liability, if you will, like, after the, so after the two weeks of carryover, so at the time was $139,000 roughly. So, and now, so in the past few weeks, it has decreased down to $131,000. So, that liability, if you will, is getting smaller. It's down $8,000 at this point. So, but one of the things in terms of, you know, what towns are doing, what other town administrators are thinking of right now, like, this is on the mind of every surrounding community right now. And like, I think every community, every governmental entity, at the end of FY20, so at the end of FY20, oh, they made plans and worked all like to address really the uniquenesses that were brought on at the beginning of the pandemic. So, I mean, looking at it, I'm actually a year later, so almost in March 2021. So, there's a lot of really mixed emotions out there in terms of the approach. It's not really as unanimous as it was last year. There are a lot of communities that are like sticking to the principle that last year was a one-time-only. Like, and this year, with the outstanding liabilities on top of everything else, oh, you know, to address it in the same fashion that communities did last year, would begin really to be unsustainable. But there's really a lot to consider with this whole conversation as well. There were collective bargaining issues. There were workforce issues, just really having the ability to keep departments all staffed. And I mean, really, I mean, what I would recommend at this point, like, I think generally speaking, we're still relatively early in looking at it, which is, I think, a good thing and healthy thing. What I would like to propose is we look at it and try to get a better sense of what our neighbors are doing over the next, actually, two weeks, and we visited at the March 24th meeting.
Okay.
That will put us in a position where, at that point, we're really finalizing where the board is on the FY22 budget. So, and based on where we are at that point, we can plan for a discussion, we can plan, you know, for, you know, potential dollar amounts if, like, if the board or if the town does want to consider any type of buyout again, oh, and we would have more, actually, actually up-to-date information. Oh, as I mentioned, oh, I think in terms of how our communities are dealing with this, it's not as universal as it was last year. But there were many things, there were many factors that really need to go into a conversation like this before, oh, like, it's actually dealt with and considered, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, I didn't, I really wanted to hear your thoughts on it. I know Town Administrator Aronstein didn't completely agree, you know, or, or her recommendation was not the action that the board took on this last fiscal year. So, I did just want to have that expertise, that insight that you could bring to us as town administrator, and I'm totally fine if we want to revisit this on March 24th. But how do my colleagues feel?
I agree.
I agree. We ought to see what the neighboring towns are doing before we take any action.
And we might be able to, we might be able to have our town accountant here for that meeting as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of Mr. Mullen, and it'd just be an agenda item for our meeting on the 24th of March.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think the point he made, and we did discuss this a year ago, only we were, we were at, at the November, December, January time period. The comment that Mr. Mullen made about staffing, extremely important, because we're in March. There's only three months to go in the fiscal year. And so, we don't have, employees don't have that much time. Hopefully, travel is going to be allowed, but in any case, staffing at this point in time is a really important issue.
Absolutely. And we did consider that last year, when we made this decision as well.
We were further out, and now we're closer, so it's, it's a really important one.
Hearing no further discussion, let's take it to a vote. Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. And thank you, Town Administrator Mullen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm going to get in the habit of saying "Mr. Administrator." It doesn't roll off the tongue. Okay.
It's okay, you can call me anything.
As long as you're here. So, Mrs. Brady, I know we have a discretionary spending request from the library. Bear with me just a moment. Takes me a moment to scroll. This was submitted by Mrs. Tavara's on February 25th. They have a few digital subscription renewals coming up at the library, which obviously cross the, or are more than the threshold of $1,500 for discretionary spending requests that the Board of Selectmen had previously set via unanimous vote. And so thus, this requires our approval. She attached an order approval for Weiss Ratings, and that's a financial database that allows patrons to research mutual funds and stocks, get strength ratings on banks, credit unions, unions and insurance companies. And they also have financial literacy tools. And it actually, she says, does get used from patrons, which is awesome. And they actually worked with the company to achieve a better price. And they also have a renewal for FreeGal that she forwarded through DocuSign, which is a digital signing tool. And there was also some magazine and newspapers subscriptions, as well, as I understand. But the one for FreeGal Music is $1,871, which is over the 1,500, and so that's before us for our approval. But then there's also this, hold on. I'm sorry, the agenda made it look like it was one. It's not, it's several. That's why I was confused. So, we have one for FreeGal Music for the 1,800, one for Weiss Ratings for $1,595 as well. And I think these both need to be acted on. Is that correct, Mrs. Brady? They're not the same? This isn't like a bid, like two things.
That's correct, it's two.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure when we vote. So, does anyone have any questions regarding the, we'll take the first one, the digital subscription renewal for FreeGal Music?
I have no questions.
No.
So, I will entertain motions to approve the discretionary spending request for FreeGal Music for the term of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, for a total amount of $1,871.
I so move.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. I will also entertain motions for, to approve the discretionary spending request in the amount of $1,595 for the financial rating series from Weiss Ratings and Grey House Publishing.
So moved.
Before I second that, is that also including the New York Times? Because she makes a reference in her letter about the New York Times.
It is, and she was saying that the price went up a little bit, which cost the total price to go up a little bit. So, that's what she was saying.
Yeah, well, actually, she said the price rate was raised substantially. So, it wasn't just.
Oh, no, she didn't. Yes, you're right, Selectmen Pacheco. She didn't bring that before us. I think she's trying to quote negotiate.
Okay, so that's separate than the Ys then, okay.
Yes, my apologies.
Yep, no, that's fine. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, and I just wanted to add, this date is, the renewal dates are April 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2022 for this. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that. Oh, I, I made the motion, I guess, yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion, Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye, and we will await that next discretionary spending request from the library as well. Next, under public input, if you have public input, you just need to unmute yourself, state your name and your address. And I ask that if you have public input related to something on the agenda, that you just wait until we get to that agenda item. Sir, Mr. Lapointe, you have the floor, sir.
I'm Zach Lapointe, 2682 Elm Street in Dyton. And I'm the chairperson for the Friends of the Library. I just wanted to bring up to everybody that we have an event coming up, Meet the Candidates Night, on March 29th at 7:00. It'll be held on Zoom, and if you want more information about it, you can feel free to let me know and email us at dytonfriends@gmail.com.
Mrs. Brady, is that something we normally put on the agenda? If Mr. Lapointe sent you the information, could we add this under scheduled announcements for the March 24th agenda?
Right, I already, I already sent it to Leanne to have it included.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You were on the ball, sir. Thank you. Do you have anything else, Mr. Lapointe?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you so much. Does anybody have anything else? You just need to unmute yourself, state your name and your address.
Brett?
Yes.
Leonard Hull, 760 Main Street. This is in regards to an earlier discussion with the Board of Health and the communication to the homes on the issue of homebound citizens. Could the town's phone communication system be used to contact the homes? Is it capable of spreading that message to the homes so that they could at least contact Board of Health or the Selectmen's Office?
I, that's a good question, Mr. Hull. I think the only phone system we would have is the, what's it called, the Code Red? And I'm pretty sure that the only people that it would call, text, or email are people who had already signed up. So, we could get some of the people that way, I think, Mr. Hull, but if somebody hadn't signed up, or if somebody was homebound, didn't have internet, or didn't have someone to sign up for them on their behalf, then I'm not sure if it would be useful, but we could certainly use it for this.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a good point. Mrs. Brady, can we make sure that we reach out to the Board of Health when we circle back on this, and also Town Administrator Mullen, and just, we might want to utilize the Code Red system for this. Yeah, this is a good point.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, and there is a public input. We put it twice on the agenda, so there is a public input at the end of the meeting. Anyone who can stay awake long, long enough to get there deserves to speak, quite frankly. Okay, Selectmen Pacheco, sir, do you mind apprising us of the scheduled announcements?
Sure, it must be 6:55 then.
Yes, it is, actually.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has created a 211 hotline to assist in making vaccination appointments. The Board of Health and the Council on Aging encourages any resident 65 years or older who have difficulty registering for vaccination appointment, use the state website to use the 211 hotline. Those without internet access or who may have difficulty utilizing the 211 hotline may contact the Commissioner and Disability Coordinator Jonathan Gill at 774-872-0924 for additional assistance. The new 211 hotline can be accessed by dialing 211 and selecting the prompt "Help and Schedule a Vaccine Appointment." The hotline is only available for residents 65 and older, that's me, without internet access. Those 16-plus with two medical conditions or who otherwise cannot use the appointment site. They take calls Monday through Thursday from 8:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Friday through Sunday, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The Town Hall and Old Town Hall are closed to the public. All Council on Aging, Primetime and Library programs that are currently scheduled at Old Town Hall will be canceled until further notice. The library will still offer curbside service. Payments or any correspondence can be left either in the outside drop box located by the walkway at the entrance of Town Hall or the one in front of Old Town Hall. Payments may also be made by mail and online via the town website, The Town of Dyton's Food Bank Distribution will be held next on March 20th, 2021, located at Town Hall 979 Somerset Avenue, lower level as a drive-through. There is a townwide parking ban in effect April 1st, 2021. No person shall allow their vehicle to be parked on the street so as to obstruct snow removal. I get to read that one more time, and after that, it's going to be April 1st, fortunately. The Dyton Public Library has tax forms. Please call ahead for any forms you may need, and they will bring them to you, to your car as part of the curbside service. You can call 508-669-6421. The Dyton Public Library has one upcoming virtual event that you can register for, attracting birds, butterflies, and other beneficials on Thursday, March 18th at 6:30. Please register with the Dyton Public Library.
Thank you, sir. Next on our agenda, we did the Town Administrators' Report, your very first, sir. Next, we have old business to review, discuss, and act a license agreement for the Brook Street Solar Project. Selectmen Goulart?
Well, this is, this is going to be, this is going to be a fast one.
No worries. You have the floor.
This is the agreement that would allow the company that wants to put a solar farm on some land on Brook Street to cross town land to build a culvert, or a little bridge, as we call it, to get over a ditch. And in order for that to happen, the document that has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen when it's ready is a license agreement. Attorney Costa did send it to me. I shared it with Mr. Ferry, Mr. Pilling, Mr. Agia, and Mr., the only additions that I got were from discussion with Mr. Ferry, and I have sent those to Attorney Costa, and he said he will put them into the agreement. And once I get that agreement back, I will forward it to the gentleman at the solar company so that their attorneys can review it. And I'm going to say tentatively, I'm hoping this will be on our agenda for March the 24th, because if they have any real concerns about what's in that agreement, I think the agreement is well-written to protect the town, and I don't really see us making significant changes to it. So, I'm hoping it's just going to be. So I'm hoping it's just going to be, they're going to look at it and say, it looks good, and the board can act on it. And when it comes to the board for review and approval, it'll be similar to what you do when you vote. An order of taking, only in this case, you're going to vote the approval of the license that will be granted. And when everything's all over, said and done, and they re- remove all their equipment. They will, they are required under that license agreement to remove that culvert, our little bridge. Because we're not going to make that property accessible to the public. Now, or in the future, and when they're gone, that's gone. And the, the ditch that belongs to the town and the wooden fence, the guardrail, we are requiring them to install. Will become, the fence will become the property of the Town of Dayton. And maintenance will continue on with the Highway Department, because we will, obviously, we already own the ditch. But the fence will be ours too, the guardrail. So I hope to have the information and get it out so that this will be a March 24th agenda item.
Selectmen Goulart, thank you for the update. Do we want to take this under advisement until the 24th?
Yeah, I will make a motion that we take the license and license agreement for Brook Street Solar. For the Brook Street Solar Project under advisement for discussion on March 24th.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectmen Goulart.
Aye.
Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. And thank you again, Selectmen Goulart, for your work on that.
You're welcome.
Under Selectmen's Reports, just very briefly, for me, just on the cybersecurity awareness training program grant that we got. I just wanted to touch upon the webinar that unfortunately, Mrs. Brady and I were not able to attend. We tried valiantly, valiantly. We waited on the line for 30 minutes, and we were never let in, so. Fortunately, they sent us all the documents that were covered at that webinar, and so I just wanted to summarize what the, a little bit about the program, I guess. It's administered by the local program coordinator, and after discussing with Town Administrator Mullen. We decided the best possible local program coordinator for this particular grant would be our network administrator, Mr. Chris Rauner. And so this webinar was really tailored for the people who are going to serve as the local program coordinators. The first thing that the local program coordinator will do for this grant is to collect end-user data from our employees. So this includes just information like what department they work in, what their job title is. And put that into like a database, I guess you would call it, a spreadsheet. And what this will allow to occur is that individualized trainings for users will be based on that information. And it will also be tailored and based on the different .gov email addresses we have as town employees. And so what the training consists of is essentially online assignments. It's an online curriculum. With assignments that are based on different topics. So, for example, one of the big topics is like phishing. We actually just got an email the other day where we all had to change our email passwords because of a potential cybersecurity threat out of China. So these are real things that we deal with on a daily basis. And it's really pertinent and relevant to this training, to things that are going on in the world, not just in Dayton, not just in Massachusetts, but globally. And so things like phishing, I want to just apprise you of a couple of the other things that they go over. Like security beyond the office, mobile device security, protecting against ransomware. We had an issue several years ago where we all. Remember, and it wasn't just the Dayton Police Department, it was also the Swansea Police Department where. Data was hacked and held at ransom for Bitcoins. This happens, and. I feel like this training grant will go a long way to making us less likely, us as a town, to click. Different things that we maybe shouldn't be clicking, because they really are phishing scams. In order to avoid different cybersecurity breaches, like the ones that we have experienced in the past. And the interesting part is that all of this information is through these curricula, through these online exercises are tracked and recorded. And these reports are created based on those metrics. From the different end-users, the different employees, and then we'll get a readout. And then what this will tell us is where we're most vulnerable and. Whom is most vulnerable to what kind of a cybersecurity threat. So it's really interesting. I think it will really improve. Individual cybersecurity awareness for, for the individual employees. But it will also make us safer cybersecurity-wise as a whole. So I'm really excited about it. I'm sad I didn't get to go to the webinar. I don't think Mrs. Brady is. She's probably happy. But anyway, I think it'll go a long way, and I'm lucky that we have our network administrator in Chris Rauner that's going to help guide us. Through this, and Mr. Town Administrator, now that you're here, I will be able to loop you in on everything. Yeah, absolutely. And that, that was it. Unless anyone has any questions.
Dr. C, I just want to make a comment. I think it was Sunday morning, I had forwarded an email from the Department of Revenue with warnings about. Potential cyber attack, and I sent it to not only people in town, but also the school department, BP, AGI. Everyone I could think of that, I figured it's from DOR, it's important. And I just want to commend Chief McGee, because he got back to me Sunday morning, and he had checked with Chris, our techie. And assured us, assured me, that Chris said we'd all be okay. So I just want to give a shout out and thank Chief McGee. Because I, I think I had the response in less than 30 minutes. It was, he came back so quickly.
Sounds like.
I'm glad to know that somebody reads these things and he immediately took action. So I felt pretty good about that. Thanks, Chief McGee.
Absolutely. He's always on the ball, that's what I say. Does anybody have anything else under my report? All right, Selectmen Pacheco, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, so I am the Board of Selectmen's liaison person for the Human Rights Committee. And they voted at their March 2nd meeting to follow in response to the email that Chairman Brett Zagrafas received on January 12th. "We, the Dayton Commission of Human Rights, unanimously denounced the statements in the letter directed to the board dated January 12th, 2021, as it does not align with our mission. We support everyone's inherent right to live without fear of discrimination or retribution. Based upon race, gender, identity, sexual orientation, religion, socioeconomic status, age, or ability. The purpose of the Dayton Human Rights Commission is to promote and protect the rights of all people. We aim to empower and build a strong, more unified community that recognizes inclusivity, acceptance, social equality, and justice, and respect of its diverse population." And they also, the majority voted to inform the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the commission. That Human Rights Commission recommends that the gay pride flag be flown during the month of June at Town Hall. And as I've explained to the commission as well, to the public, that was a recommendation. And they don't have the final say on it, but that's a recommendation. So that's the recommendation of the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you, sir. You got through that, those meetings without any more gray hairs?
I lost some hair. As Woody points out to me all the time. Maybe that's because he's a barber. He notices.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've got, I had two meetings that, one was today, so it didn't make the agenda, but it was the MMA meeting. And I've just got a quick, couple of quick comments that I want to make on Stormwater Committee and MMA. Before I do that, I just want to ask or recommend, I did see the Human Rights Commission meeting. My concern is that anyone leading a meeting has got to be aware of the protocol. I don't know if we have any copies of Cushing's Manual available, or even a Robert's Rules of Order. But it's important that the person who conducts the meeting understands that if. The protocols aren't followed, action taken could actually be ruled null and void. So if we could help the, any board of committee that, that may struggle with protocol for conducting a meeting. And then the other thing I would suggest is, when, when individuals are appointed and sworn. Very important that everyone takes a look at conflict of interest law and the requirement that. We all have to take that test every two years and give a copy of that completion certificate to the town clerk. So I know they're a brand-new committee, they're starting out, but that was my thought when I saw the meeting, and so I just offer that as a suggestion for any committee. That nothing be done, okay, to help them.
Yeah, so have they been given a copy of?
I was, you beat me to the punch. You beat me.
The Board of Committee Handbook that we approved?
So not just that, Selectmen Pacheco, that kind of outlines like individual responsibilities. It sounds like Selectmen Goulart is raising specific concerns about. The, like how the meeting was conducted. I think that falls on the chair. So if we have like an extra copy, I know we have one in the office. I bought one for the off, I bought two for the office. Several years ago. We definitely have a Cushing's Manual. Honestly, that's like another language. It's like very, it's written in like the 1800s.
Well, that's why I mentioned Robert's Rules of Order, because just the initial things about. And, and we run into this, and let's face it, we've been at town meetings when our town moderator of 30, 25 or 30 years. Has had to ask town council for a ruling or assistance. And I know that when you start amending motions, as we have done in the past, and we have to keep track of where we are.
You do.
It gets confusing, but since we have a, this new committee, and we'll have others, I'm sure, that we, we should. Provide some kind of a handout or an outline, and I could say, for the initial stuff, I think even Robert's Rules of Order would be okay. Because it does get very confusing, and when a committee puts a lot of work into, and effort into things. It would be a shame to have somebody say, well, that was out of order, so it doesn't count, or, you know. But anyhow, getting back to my report, so the Stormwater Committee.
Did I just?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I thought that the, the annual town meetings or the town meetings that was Cushing. But the regular board and committee meetings is Robert Rules of Order. Am I correct in that?
No, everything is Cushing's. That's what the town adopted, probably when Cushing wrote the book.
I don't know when he wrote it.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, it's, it's like, I mean, the, if you have a copy of the original, like I do, like the paper is like dust. It's stacked.
There was actually.
Robert, Robert's Rules is like sort of similar, and it, the way it's written, and I only refer to Robert Rules, because it's written in like modern English. I know that sounds crazy. So if we could get Mr. Cassidy a copy of that, that might be more helpful. It's shorter. It's more succinct, it's very clear what the, what the duties are of the chair, like how the meeting is conducted, and I think. It was helpful for me in my first time as being chair of the Board of Selectmen, so.
And I know when. I know Mr. McKeon was still the town moderator, and there was some discussion about adopting Robert's Rules. And I don't think Mr. McKeon supported it, because obviously, he was experienced using Cushing's, and. So there was no action or anything suggested about a Warren article, but it can get, it can get confusing, so.
Just in his defense, this is the first committee, I believe, he's ever been on, and he's the, he's the chairperson. I think he's doing a good, good job, but I will speak to him about what you mentioned. I think it's very important that.
Yeah, and I, I don't say this as a criticism. We all had to learn.
Yep.
And as I said, the main concern is, you don't want to be ruled out of order if you've worked on something and, and did all the work and. And it's kind of like when we have bylaw changes that get voted at a town meeting, and then the attorney general looks at them and says, no, you got to do that over. So, you know, it might save, it might streamline things a little, I'll say.
Yeah, I agree with that.
This, so, the booklet that we approved, the Board and Committee Handbook, says that the town meetings is Cushing. And committee meetings follow Robert Rules of Order.
I thought that was what, how it was. I know, I know the town meeting is 100% Cushing.
Yes.
For sure, I know that much.
I'm not aware of a vote ever to do anything except Cushing's, but as long as there is some kind of guidance to help people, you know.
Understood. I, yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Well, taken.
So the Stormwater Committee met this week, and we started out with a site visit down at Dyton Rock Park. There's a serious. Surface water flooding problem. It's got nothing to do with the river and high tide. We went there to look at, we had seen pictures, and it's a serious problem. The health agent is waiting for some information, because one of the lots that's flooded. The owner wants to replace the septic system, so we're waiting for information from the engineer for that septic system. That would help Mr. Pilling provide some recommendations. There was brief discussion on the solar farm that will be up behind Rujo's Farm Greenhouses and Stand. And the solar developer is responded to a number of questions, and again. Health Agent Pilling will be reviewing that and getting back to them, so we'll be talking about that at the April meeting. Pretty much most of our time was, was spent talking about the, the. The issue with the flooding down at the park. The, as we know, we don't own those roads, and we provide minimum maintenance. But we'll be coming back to the Board of Selectmen. Because if town, if there's any town action that can legally be taken to help alleviate the problem. Obviously, we would have to involve the Board of Selectmen, because again, we don't own the roads down there, so. We'll, we'll have updates, further updates for the Board of Selectmen periodically. The MMA Policy Committee meeting, first of all, earlier, we were talking about the Department of Agriculture. There has been some change in leadership. The Joint Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Agriculture at the state level. Is now, it has Representative Dykema and Senator Roush as the, I believe, co-chairs. And the new House Leadership on Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy is Representative Roy, and that's. Obviously, a committee that the Policy Committee I'm on deals with a great deal. There is a House Bill 1625 that has been proposed, and this is to not ban the use of wipes. But to get those products, whether they're, the disinfectant wipes, whether they're personal cleansing, or whether they're the wipes that you use for babies to clean them. That the packaging states they are not flushable, because we've all heard the problems with. Public sewers, getting the processing equipment that handles sewage, getting clogged and getting damaged, and. These wipes say they're flushable, but this legislation would change the wording on the packaging, so that none of them would carry that. And the other comment was, because obviously, a lot of people have septic systems, they do not dissolve. And when you have your septic tank pumped, where do you think that's, that waste goes? It goes to a treatment plant, so. I don't know how they're going to enforce it, but maybe just the change of wording will help people. The, the, I mentioned the mattress bill before, that's still out there. That's a big concern, because if they, the state says that we can no longer. Take mattresses, and they don't provide a place for us to send them to, to get them recycled, I don't know what we're going to do with them. That's a big issue. The, there's another one that would place the responsibility. On the manufacturer of packaging. To help provide for the disposal of packaging, and this would be paper packaging and plastics. And what that means is, the legislation proposes that. The manufacturers actually contribute to communities, and how they're going to track this, I'm not sure. But actually make monetary contributions to communities to help offset the costs that communities have in dealing with packaging, because in some. Cause in some cases, it's excess packaging. You get a giant box and there's a little box inside, but the big box is full of all sorts of junk that has to be disposed of. So uh, those were the main topics that we talked about today. And uh, obviously there'll be future updates on all of this. So um, I did announce to the committee that today might be my last meeting and because I'm not running for reelection, but um, that I had offered to continue on if the new Board of Selectmen wants me to. At least through the June appointments and uh, so anyhow, um, I, I just, I just left it at that. The uh, the other thing I would ask the board to consider uh, to have on the next agenda, our next Stormwater Committee meeting is going to happen before the election, I believe. So on the March twenty-fourth meeting, I request that the current Board of Selectmen uh, vote to allow me to continue until the new Board of Selectmen actually meets and has their organization. Uh, because I don't want to leave the Stormwater Committee with no chairperson. Um, so that uh, this would just be that one position that I'm talking about until you have your new board organized and can actually act on uh, the other, the other uh, requests that I made, so. That's what I had for today.
Absolutely. We will make sure we act on that.
Okay.
And thank you for planning ahead as always. Okay, next under new business. Oh, we finally got to new business and yes, Selectman Pacheco, the time is seven forty-five. Um, does anyone need to take a break or want to take a break?
I would like to.
Two, uh, let's do three minutes, we'll meet at eight forty, four minutes.
Okay.
Okay, the gang is back together. Next on our agenda is to review, act and discuss the Assistant Town Accountant's job description. My question before we get into this is, um, Mrs. Brady. Town accountant, excuse me, Assistant Town Accountant, um, Mrs. McCarron had reached out to us about some changes that she had wanted to see in this before the board acted based on some job duties that they currently perform. Were those changes made?
Yes, they were.
Awesome, thank you. Um, and so our job here is to act on this hopefully tonight so that we can get this posted internally as quickly as possible. And then if we don't find anyone internally, we'll have to post it externally and Mrs. McCarron is retiring at the end of the month. So there is a little bit of urgency. Did anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? And I'm also looking at you, Town Administrator Mullin, um, regarding the job description as prepared this evening.
So are we uh, voting on the job description or are we voting on posting uh, the job? Of both?
Technically should be both, but I don't see the posting here. I'll, I'll defer to the board. I'm not gonna make the decision for us.
Well, it says review, discuss, act. So we've reviewed it, I would assume, we're discussing it and we can act. And my motion would be, excuse me, approve the job description as presented for the Assistant Town Accountant and post it accordingly.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, and just so the board is aware, we do have sort of a template for the postings where it's pretty much the same structure and you put in certain words that are specific to the job that you're actually posting for. So it really doesn't change that much. The dates change, some of the qualifications, but other than that, it's pretty much the template, so. Hearing no further discussion, Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectman Zagrafos is also an aye. All right, that's good news. The town accountant will be happy to hear that. Um, next on our agenda is to review, discuss and act the job description and I believe also the posting, internally at least to begin, for the office manager role. And this is for the Combined Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals Office Manager. And for my colleagues or residents who are unaware, since I've been in this role and Selectman Goulart, you will also be able to speak to this. We filled this position several times and now I'm just talking about the Zoning Board of Appeals Office Manager and you also served on the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, Selectman Pacheco. So we've had to fill that role several times. And I think part of the, in just discussing this with the office manager for the planning board, Mrs. Easterday, part of my rationale at least for why it's been so hard to fill that role is it's only twenty hours a week. So you would, it really takes us, you, you really have to luck out to find someone where that fits perfectly for them. And so our solution that we came up together in talking to the chairman of the planning board and the office manager for the planning board and even Mr. Gray, who was the previous zoning board of appeals office manager before he departed um, for another opportunity. Um, we thought that combining the two into one thirty-five hour a week position would be the solution. Um, so that's why this is on here tonight.
Did you have any contact with the zoning board at all about this, the chairman or any member?
Mrs. Brady, I think Mrs. Easterday did reach, she's in pretty close touch with Mr. Karen, so I'm pretty sure.
She's linked in everyone on this discussion, yep.
And they were, to Selectman Pacheco's point, they were on board with this, the zoning board?
Yep.
Okay.
And we think this can be done in thirty-five hours because the CBA before was twenty hours. I don't know what the planning board was, but we think that both jobs combined uh, can be done uh, satisfactory in thirty-five hours.
My, I don't know if, I feel like you're looking at Mrs. Brady. She's like, why are you looking at me?
No, we did, we did.
Yeah, no, yeah, my, so I wasn't on the zoning board, um, Selectman Pacheco, certainly as long as you were. I unfortunately never got to do a forty B. I know just in talking to Mrs. Grassu, who's the former office manager. I know it's a lot of work. Um, I know it in talking to the former office manager, Mr. Gray. I think it might be difficult if there is a forty B. Um, but I think the way that I've spoken to Mrs. Easterday recently, like if there's not, I feel, it's, she should be able to handle it. She seems very confident if she's the person who is chosen, that she would be able to perform both jobs. And honestly, for the last few months, ever since Mr. Gray left, she had been doing both and they're, you know, they completed the forty B and then he went off to his other venture and everything has been um, fine. So she's already been doing that job, so I think it's manageable. I think the diciness will come in if there's like, you know, a, a subdivision and then also a forty, a forty B subdivision and they're both at the same time, one going through planning, one going through zoning. That would be a bit of a perfect storm, but um, I think that um, if Mrs. Easterday is chosen, she's, I mean, she's so proficient at the job and good at what she does that I think, um, quite frankly, she could probably handle anything, to be honest.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. But that's just my guess, like, you know, you served on there longer than me. Again, you've been through the whole forty B process from start to finish and you really know more than I do about like the work that it entails.
Yeah, I think this is a, a good compromise at the moment. We'll have to maybe reevaluate this in the future. Uh, but right now, my understanding is there's no forty B before the uh, Z, ZBA. When I was on it, we had seven forty Bs. Uh, they've had at least one since then, the strawberry fields. Uh, so let's, we'll play by ear, but let's, I'm okay with combining those two positions for thirty-five hours.
And, and to your point, Selectman Pacheco, what I'm thinking is we might, we might want to think in future years when the, when the budget's being done about things like overtime because that might need to be the solution in a year where zoning thinks they're gonna have a forty B. Um, it might just take a little bit of planning to get around that, that's all. But I think this will solve, in my opinion, the problem of constantly having to fill that vacancy for the Zoning Board of Appeals Office Manager.
Yep.
Selectman Goulart, do you have any?
No, I'm fine with me. I think the combining him is a good idea. And if uh, projects and come up at the same time and, and additional help is needed, then we'll have to look at it at that time. It might be able to be handled just through extra hours so that she can concentrate on projects, but I'm, I'm comfortable for now, yeah.
And just so the town knows, uh, that we're, we're actually saving money by doing this because we're not paying two people for health insurance and other uh, benefits. So the town is actually uh, saving money and they may have to work some overtime, but I still think we're gonna save money.
I think so.
Nothing, nothing's more expensive than the increase in health insurance premiums, as we all know. So it really does, like all seriousness, it really, um, I'm grateful that we had a team that came together to propose this idea and then um, a team that executed it. And I'm really grateful um, that people put their minds together on this and I think it's a good solution. Hearing no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the jo, uh, combined job description and post as uh, appropriate or as necessary. I forget the phrase you used, Selectman Goulart.
I saw.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Zagrafos is an aye and Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
Okay. That is a good job. And next, we have to review, discuss and act the recommendation for the Veterans Agent Raymond Hague. And bear with me just a moment. Does anyone want to read? Um, it's gonna take me a second to scroll.
What do you want read?
Um, there was a couple items.
Yeah.
The letter.
Yeah.
March third.
I'll read the letter from uh, the uh, former Veterans Agent.
Thank you, sir.
Dear Board, I re, I have reviewed the applicants for the position of Town of Dyton's Veterans Agent and Mr. Raymond Hague is the clear frontrunner. Mr. Hague has been the City of Fall River Veterans Agent for ten years and has done an outstanding job. He is qualified and certified, so no training will be necessary. I am confident that he will find cooperation from all town departments as I have and would be a great asset for the Town of Dyton. That's from uh, Donald Hershey, Veterans Service Agent. And then we received a uh, letter from uh, Mr. Hague. Dear Ms. Goulart, Mr. Pacheco and Dr. Zagrafos, I am writing to let you know of my interest in applying for the position of Veteran Service Officer for the Town of Dyton. I am an experienced VSO and have served for the past ten years as the certified VSO for the City of Fall River. I served honorably in the Navy CBs and am a resident of Dyton. In my current position, I manage a veteran client base of up to four hundred veterans independents while overseeing a budget of three million dollars. I am certified as a VSO by the State of Massachusetts and ten yearly training by the Department of Veterans Affairs. I am very proud, proud to have successfully formed the committee to bring an eighty percent replica of the Veterans Wall to the South Coast. I have a passion for working with veterans and their families as well as with others, veteran agencies in the Commonwealth. I believe in treating all veterans and their families with respect, dignity and compassion. As a resident of Dyton, I am interested in applying for the part-time position of VSO that is advertised for the town. Please find and close my current resume. I am looking forward to speaking with you. Yours truly, Raymond Hague. And I just want to comment, the resume is outstanding and uh, he has a lot of experience.
I believe we have Mr. Hague uh, here tonight, so uh, Mr. Hague, if you can hear me and you're able, did you want to unmute yourself and maybe say a few words?
Am I on?
Yes, sir.
Well, well, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only reason I'm on tonight is because I knew. Well, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only reason I'm on tonight is because I knew you had that on your agenda to forward to the March 24th. That's why there's no video. I was just, you know, listening in to see when it come to this piece of business. So I, I don't know if you're gonna forward it to March 24th and then I, I would be visible for you and we could speak. I don't know if you have any questions of me now, but I'd be glad to answer them.
Actually, so I'm very, first of all, I want to thank you for applying. I was very grateful to hear of your application and to review it and to see your resume and was very impressed. My only question for you, as your reputation precedes you, is you will be able to drive the veterans vehicle, the van, and as you have a license, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That was my only question, sir.
Yeah, is it a handicap van with a lift or is it just a regular van?
It is.
With a lift.
Yes, with a lift, correct.
Yes, yeah, I could drive that.
Perfect. Selectmen Pacheco, did you have any questions?
Yes, as you probably, you live in Dayton, so you probably know that we have a Veterans Memorial Day and a a Memorial Day and Veterans Day service at the town hall. And I just, I don't care what your politics are, but I just wanna make sure that no politics is discussed or your personal opinions unmentioned when you speak at these events.
Oh, Selectmen, I learned that a long time ago. Not to bring my, my views into my personal job.
Well, I thank you for that and I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Selectmen Goulart, as the, as a sister of fellow veterans and a veteran family member, do you have any questions?
No, I looked at his, his resume and his qualifications and I put a lot of stock in the recommendation of Mr. Hershey and I'm good to go. I'm ready to make a motion.
I will entertain one.
Chairman, I move that we excuse me, accept the recommendation of Veteran Service Officer Donald Hershey and appoint Mr. Hague to the become Dayton's next Veteran Services Officer.
Under discussion, Mr. Hague, did you have a specific start date in mind?
Well, I do. I, I thought you would be voting on the 24th. And we are, we're dedicating the Vietnam Wall at the bicentennial park on May 15th. And I'm also in the middle of a very difficult budget year in the city, preparing the budget, the FY22 budget. And I would need to finish that task. When I talked to Mr. Hershey, I told him that it would be probably June 1st.
And I, Mr. Hershey has really stepped up and been doing a lot as a volunteer for the Veterans Department. So I assume that you and he spoke about that. He's aware. Did he mention continuing as a volunteer until you were able to begin at all, Mr. Hague?
I, I think he was looking at an earlier date than that, probably late April or, or May. But I, I do have that commitment for, for the wall and the timing is what it is. But that's when I would be available. And I think for the amount of time I spent in the City of Fall River, that in that range would be the right thing to do to, so they could get somewhat up and running also.
So, Mr. Hague, would you like me to include in my motion that this appointment would be effective June 1st?
I would, I would appreciate that. I think that would be helpful for me. I don't know if it's helpful for the town, but it's helpful for me.
Okay, so Mrs. Brady, please add that to the motion that I made that the appointment will be effective June 1st.
And I had spoke to Mrs. Kerwin about different things going on in the Veterans Department and my concern was like not having someone there. And it was relayed to me by Mrs. Kerwin, who spoke directly to the office manager, Mrs. Pinto, that the office was fine and the office would be fine. And there was nothing pressing coming up that would require the position to be staffed permanently immediately. Did any, any of that change, Mrs. Brady?
Oh, that still stands.
Alright, just making sure.
So Mike, it would be, if we're gonna have a Memorial Day service, because that's gonna be obviously before June 1st. And how, how is the town gonna deal with that?
We would probably, Selectmen Pacheco, just like Mrs. Kerwin is working with Mr. Hershey and the Veterans Department currently on the, and probably Mr. Reins from Parks and Rec on the Medal of Honor Ceremony. I think they would work together on a small, probably somber like last year, Memorial Day ceremony for this year. That would be my guess.
That's very close to June 1st. I wouldn't have any problem being involved in that in the transition type period. And I don't know if the town puts out flags on the veterans' graves. I know in Fall River, we put out flags. I don't know if the town buys those flags.
We have a Graves' officer that takes care of that.
Yeah, we have a Graves' officer in the city. And so you do do that, so.
Yes.
I, I would be available in that window of time to make that transition. That's a good time on, on Memorial Day to do that.
Very nice, Mr. Hague.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And before we take this vote, we did get a resident comment and I apologize, I'm not able to like check the chat constantly throughout the meeting. I have to conduct the meeting. A Dayton resident, Jen Duchkowski, wrote, "Mr. Hague, thank you for your service and for applying to serve our town. As a sister of a veteran who is still actively serving at this time, I highly value this position and I'm looking forward to seeing you in this role for our town and our valuable veterans. Mr. Hershey, thank you for your work in reviewing resumes and all you have done to serve our town." And I think you get the final word, Miss Duchkowski. Selectmen Pacheco, your vote, sir.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is a thankful and enthusiastic I. Mr. Hague, welcome to the team and in between now and whenever you want to get involved or contact us about the Memorial Day ceremony. You know, we're here to answer any questions and make the transition as smooth as possible, okay?
Well, thank you very much for your confidence and I'll do the best I can.
Thank you. I know you well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Mr. Hershey and to Mrs. Pinto and also Mrs. Brady and Mrs. Kerwin, who were instrumental in this process. It took a little bit of time, but sometimes it takes time to find the best candidate and we're really grateful, Mr. Hague. So thank you. Next on the agenda is the conservation agents' request to collect fees when performing site reviews. The wording of this is a little bit awkward. It's not really the conservation agent's request and I'll explain. Previously, as everyone was aware, Mr. Mello was the secretary who did a lot of the administrative work for the Conservation Commission, but he also is an expert. So he did a lot of the like conservation perk tests and all that. So what has happened since Mr. Mello is sort of continuing the secretarial administrative work, which Mrs. Caledonia does not do as the conservation agent. A lot of the conservation tests, perk tests have been done by Mrs. Caledonia. But because there's not been a vote since Mr. Mello stopped doing them, accounting has nothing to go by to pay Mrs. Caledonia for the perk test that she's already done since Mr. Mello retired from doing those perk tests. So this is on the agenda to see if the board is amenable to allowing Mrs. Caledonia to be paid for those perk test fees retroactively to her start date when she took over doing them. That's why this is on here. And I will open it up for discussion. Town administrators, Selectmen Goulart, Selectmen Pacheco, you have the floor.
I support it. And I'm in favor of it going retroactive.
I support it too, as long as any of these tests that were done or inspections or whatever she had to do, were done outside of her regular work hours. Because if she's doing them when she's on payroll, so to speak, you can't collect, you can't double dip. But I realize she has to schedule these when property owners are available, so she might have to go out and do a special one. So as long as they do not take place during her regular working day, when she's on salary, I would support it and support it retroactively also.
Selectmen Goulart, that's a really good point. And I'm glad you clarified that, because that was actually the question I was gonna ask. So perhaps in the motion that gets made and when we go to contact accounting via M O to tell them of our vote, we could explicitly state that.
Okay.
Alright.
I'm scribbling here.
Yep, no worries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the payment to conservation agent, Mrs. Lisa Caledonia. The amount of $25 per site for septic repair inspection and $25 per acre for new construction for conservation perk review retroactive to well, it can't be January 1st, that's New Year's Day.
It wasn't.
Retroactive to January 4th. That's the first Monday, 2021. Provided that payments will only be made for work done outside of the regular workday. Or is it inspections done outside of the regular workday?
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, excuse me, I'm sorry, old habits die hard. I can't get, get it out of my wiring here in my brain.
See, when you get old, there goes your memory.
Selectmen Pacheco, sir.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
Selectmen Zagrafos is also an I. We have next to review, discuss and act a request from Police Chief Robert McDonald to declare some surplus items. And anyone who has this up, because it's gonna take me a while to scroll, do you mind starting us off?
Yes, this is regarding unneeded cruises. It's dated February 24, 2021 to the Board of Selectmen. I, Chief Robert McDonald, am asking for permission from the Board of Selectmen to take the following cruises out of commission. The cruises are cruiser two, a 2011 Ford Crown Victoria, black, white. Vehicle number is two F A B P seven B V eight B X one seven two two six one. And cruiser number three, a 2010 Ford Crown Victoria, black and white. VIN number two F A B B seven eight V one X, excuse me, A X one oh two one two nine. The crews listed are no longer reliable and no longer fit the needs of the department due to their age, mileage and projected repair cost. Proper disposal will be at the discretion of the board. Respectfully submitted, Robert McDonald, Chief Robert McDonald.
I just wanted to add before we act on this, that probably before we became a green community, these cruises would have been gifted to another department for use. That's no longer permissible. I don't believe the Crown Victorias are considered energy compliant. It sounds like regardless of that fact, that the police chief didn't think that they were gonna be useful at all. So I just wanted to state that for the record. And I will entertain motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant permission for Chief McDonald to declare the following cruises as surplus to be disposed of at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. Cruiser two, 2011 Ford Crown Victoria, black and white, VIN number as previously read. Cruiser three, 2010 Ford Crown Victoria, black and white, VIN number as previously read.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
Gee, they're only 10 and 11 years old, gee. Can't we wring anything out of them?
Hearing no further discussion, Selectmen Pacheco, sir.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an I. Next, we have to review, discuss and act a request from the Board of Health to change the hours at the transfer station. Select, Selectmen Goulart or Selectmen Pacheco, do you have it up?
I have it.
Thank you.
March 8th, 2021, Board of Selectmen, 979 Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass. 02715. Regarding transfer station, additional hour of operation. Dear Board members, due to the increased use of the transfer station, the Board of Health voted at the meeting on February 11th, 2021 to open the transfer station for an additional hour each week. The transfer station is currently open Tuesdays, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Saturday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. With your approval, we would like to make this effective on March 20th, that the transfer station will open at 8:00 AM on Saturdays. There is adequate money in the budget for the remaining portion of FY21, see attached budget analysis by the Town of Com. And the FY22 budget includes a 2% increase over FY21, which covers the salary of the attendant for the nine hours each week for the entire year. Sincerely, Todd M. Pillling, Health Agent.
Questions or comments about the request?
No, I, I support this because, you know, because of the pandemic and COVID, people are staying home, they're doing more work around their property. I know last year I made more trips than I had planned to make to the transfer station, so I'm in full support of this.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request for an additional hour beginning on March 20th for the transfer station attendant as requested by the Board of Health.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectmen Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectmen Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an I. Next on the agenda, we have a request from the Emergency Preparedness Committee regarding an intern. And it's dated March 8th, 2021. I like this letterhead, by the way. Dear Board of Selectmen, the Emergency Preparedness Committee voted at their Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021 meeting to recommend Mr. Nicholas Grassi as an intern for the Emergency Preparedness Committee. He's a master's program student at the Massachusetts Maritime Academy, majoring in emergency management. That's fabulous. Nicholas is a longtime town resident with NIMS. Oh, Nick, Selectmen Goulart, you remember NIMS, our old friend. Trainings, 100, 200, 230, 300, 520, 700 and 800. That's a lot. That's quite extensive. The Emergency Preparedness Committee is pleased to recommend him for this internship. It is anticipated the intern will be paid minimum wage. We're requesting 15 hours a week. Wages would be paid out of the Town Administrator Intern Funds. There's currently $2,500 remaining in FY21. He's available to continue the internship into FY22. Signed, Chief Christopher McGee, Chairman, Emergency Preparedness Committee. I think this is fabulous. We just, I just want to get the thoughts of the Town Administrator. For the public, the reason I'm saying that isn't because I'm kicking the can down the road on my own responsibility. This is literally something in the Town Administrator's budget. It was a program that the Town Administrator oversaw before Mr. Mullen joined, so Town Administrator Aaronstein, who actually sort of was the inception behind the program. And I just wanted to gather your thoughts, sir, before we act.
So yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know this is exciting. I know this was a priority for the former Town Administrator. And I believe last year we had another interim who has very similar type experience to Mr. Grassi and that worked out extremely well. You know, I think with the current events, with the focus on really all these issues, oh, you know, to really continue this, oh, you know, commitment of the town and by the Emergency Preparedness Committee, I think is very helpful. And just in terms of the math, the $2,500 in the budget for the remainder of this year, that turns, that comes out to about 12.3 weeks. At 15 hours per week, working at the 1350 minimum wage. And the same would apply going And um, and the same would apply going into um, FY22. I'm assuming that that $2,500 is approved in the, the FY22 budget as well. So, so I want to thank the chief, I want to thank the committee, uh, you know, for continuing to make this a priority. Um, it's certainly needed and um, it's exciting to get, uh, to have an intern of Mr. Grassi's caliber and experience.
Okay, everybody, I apologize. I spilled my water on the ground near my computer wire, so that was why. Address that and my apologies.
Are you sure it's water?
It is definitely water. Um.
Well, if your hair starts to stand on end, we will dial 911.
So it sounds like you support it.
Yes.
I definitely support it. Um, I'm surprised we didn't have any other interests for other interns. Um, more this year, but I mean, it is a pandemic, so it makes sense. Um, but his expertise aligns up perfectly with, I think, a lot of the different things that they're gonna try to do. And I would also have the board before we vote, um, just be mindful of the fact that we've also asked, um, the office manager and the health agent to do a lot, a lot of contact tracing. Now they're dealing with the homebound resident program and just the regular vaccine administration, so they have a lot on their plate. So I think anything extra that could be done by an intern would be super valuable to them. So those are my thoughts.
Do you know if he'll be doing any work for the pandemic committee or is it just the emergency preparedness committee?
I think it's specifically the Emergency Preparedness Committee.
Because they all run sometimes, so.
They do. In all fairness, they do.
So yes, and I believe his availability, he's still in school, so I could be wrong. But his availability would not allow him to start immediately. But it would be towards the later part of April, I want to say.
Okay. Well, that makes sense because the semester would be, as a student, that's when your semester would be sort of dying down. That makes sense. Selectmen Gular, did you have anything?
No, I'm ready to make a motion if you're accepting them.
Absolutely.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I move that we uh, approve the request of Chief McGee to allow Nicholas Grassi to uh, serve as an intern for the Emergency Preparedness Committee.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? And I just want to thank uh, Mr. Grassi for his interest, of course, and his willingness to serve his town. I know he also serves um, with the fire department. I believe he's a call firefighter. Um, so he wears a lot of towns, a lot of hats in this town in terms of service. And um, as a lot of residents do, and we're just really appreciative of him. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectmen Pachico.
Aye.
Selectmen Gular?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Good work. Next on the agenda, uh, we received a request on March 3rd from Assistant Town Clerk and Assistant Record, Public Records Access Officer Pam Waller. And she is asking the Board of Selectmen for their permission for the Town Clerk's office to have their own mailbox placed next to the security box outside Town Hall. The Town Clerk and the Treasurer's Office will soon be separated, and we would no longer have to interrupt the Treasurer's Office to unlock the box because we have checks that have been dropped off in the security box. It will also be very useful with the number of early ballots that we experienced during the past elections. The purpose of this is to separate the clerk's email, such as census forms, dog licenses, checks for death, birth and marriage certificates, et cetera. The box will be paid for with CARES Act funds, and the cost of the graphics would be $60. I believe I would also need permission for the use of the town seal. She's correct, Selectmen Gular. But who does she ask? Because the Town Clerk doesn't start until March 15th, and she's technically everything right now. So I don't know. Thank you for your consideration, Pam Waller. So regarding the box, I think it's a good idea. I have no issue. It's gonna be paid for with CARES funds. Um, does anybody have any thoughts, questions, comments?
I'm trying to figure out where it's gonna be located.
Next to the security box outside Town Hall, so maybe to the left or the right of it?
The, the box that we have is uh, at the base of the ramp.
So maybe it could be on that grassy part on the other side of the ramp?
Oh, it's up against a building. That's what I can't figure out.
No, that's, that's a, I think that's just a replica. That's what Somerset has.
Yeah, that's not ours.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Somerset. It is Somerset, correct.
Yes, so ours would have to be to the right of what we have right now, otherwise.
It's gotta be near the ramp, yes.
Yeah, but to the right of the present one that we have there because to the left it'd be, people wouldn't be able to walk into the building.
Okay, you're right. So I will entertain motions.
I support that.
The board is so amenable.
The only concern I have is people are trained to use the other box. I'm thinking they're still gonna throw stuff in the other box, and the contents of these boxes, are they gonna grab, go to the nearest box and throw them in? Remember, we had that issue with, and I know we're gonna get security cameras, but remember when there were problems with some boxes, ballot boxes being, I don't know, sabotaged or something else? If we do this, we gotta make sure that they're, the security cameras actually cover it. Uh, cover both boxes. Um.
I agree.
You know, I'm almost, I'm almost tempted, when is the, Mr. Um, Pachico, the Town Clerk starts Monday, doesn't he?
Yes, correct. Yep.
I'm almost suggestion that we defer this until he arrives and we do it on the 24th of March.
It doesn't sound to me like this item needs to be acted on directly tonight, because the real thing is th- those two offices aren't separated yet.
Correct.
They're still technically together, so until those renovations are completed, which is not gonna happen until, what, at least April 5th, as we've heard tonight, then I think we can wait till the 24th. That's fine with me, and we can ask Mr. Pachico his thoughts.
And the other thought is since uh, she mentions that if they could get their own box, they wouldn't be um, I'll say disrupting the treasurer. I have to wait for the treasurer, uh, evidently, that's who's got the key. I would suggest that they don't wait for the treasurer, that when whoever comes in in the morning, the first one, that's one of the duties, go check the box, empty it out. They check it several times during the day. Um, and you know, the key could be kept in a secure place where it could be accessible to both the treasurer employees and the clerk. Um, and, and I think it's a good idea to wait for the offices also to be um, established, I'll call it.
I'll make a motion then, that we continue with the request from the Town Clerk's Office for a mailbox outside of Town Hall until March 24th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Selectmen Pachico.
Aye.
Selectmen Gular?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Request from the Clerk's Office for Transition Services, um. Bear with me just a moment, dated March 8th, 2021. Uh, from Assistant Town Clerk Pam Waller. As you know, our new Town Clerk, Mark Pachico, will be starting on March 15th, 2021, and in order to help with this transition, I'm asking that you consider having uh, former Town Clerk Suma Deras train Mark at her rate of pay of $44.60 for, per hour, for up to 10 hours per week. This will be extremely helpful to the office as we have our annual town election, April 10th, 2021, as well as many other clerk duties that are currently due. And as you know, the new Town Clerk will be paid at, based on experience, of course, not anything else. Um, will be paid at a lesser rate than the former Town Clerk, and so I think that means that there will be, I don't want to use this term because it's not like we like spending money that's unused, but there will be a surplus in that salary line item for the Town Clerk. And so I don't see this a- as an unreasonable request, and I think the funds are already there to pay for it.
Yeah, I support this 100%. Uh, this is a transition period. Uh, Mr. Pachico is walking in, uh, having some experience, but not that much experience as, obviously as a Town Clerk. And I think uh, the fact that Miss uh, Mrs. Mederos is willing to do this, this is great.
Mm-hmm.
I'm totally in favor of it.
Support it also, but Mrs. Mederos and/or the Town of Dyton has to get permission for Bristol County Retirement to allow this to happen before we can put it in place. She's officially retired, even if they're not paying her yet. And there are certain provisions in the law, and they've even, I think they raised the, it was 960 hours a uh, a year, but I believe that's been increased. But when a person retires, if they are brought back on a temporary basis, um, you have to get permission from the respective retirement board first.
Town Administrator Mullen? I feel like you want to say something, so speak.
Yeah, no, I believe in the pandemic. I think they might, the legislature might have put a like a pause on the 960 limitation.
They increased the number, but the, the, the need for permission is what I'm talking about, not the hours, not the dollars, because she's gonna be under both the, the hours and the dollars. But the requirement that the retirement board allow this, I, I can tell you it's a standard procedure. We had our D R treasurer retire. She actually went to Florida, and the person that replaced her, um, I'll just say didn't stay long. And the solution, I was the assistant treasurer, so uh, the solution was, um, I called her up in Florida and said, when are you coming back? Because we need you. And um, she was back within, finishing, she was down there for six weeks, but she was finishing up her time. And we got permission for her to be there, and we, uh, we did hire a new treasurer, and she spent some time, and it was fine. Uh, but we had to get permission for Bristol County Retirement. Uh, it was um, uh, an unusual circumstance, but we needed her to cover and provide training, and they allowed it. So uh, all we're looking for now is uh, uh, permission for Bristol County to allow Mrs. Mederos to come back on a temporary basis, uh, to provide this training. And uh, I would, I'm gonna make a motion that we ask Mrs. Brady to contact Bristol County Retirement tomorrow, or is, or next week, as soon as she can, and ask them what the procedure is, what does the town have to do to get permission to have Mrs. Mederos come back on a temporary basis to uh, train the new Town Clerk? Uh, my guess is it's either a letter or a form. It's not, I don't, it was years ago that we did it at D R, but I don't remember any big to-do.
My only concern is then, uh, we're not meeting till the 24th, so is it not possible to vote but make it contingent upon like Bristol County approval, Retirement Board approval?
Uh, yeah, I can make that motion.
And I didn't, I'm not imposing, I just.
No, no, I understand what you're saying.
Like, we're not gonna, we, so first of all, we can't even meet on the 17th if we wanted, because there's a, a public hearing that everybody wants to go to for Forest Hills. So I'm just trying to think of the timing, that's all.
And, but the only, so certainly, I'll make a motion to that, um, to that extent, but um, the reason I'm asking Mrs. Brady to do it tomorrow, our ASAP, is because Mrs. Mederos cannot come in and perform those duties without at least the Bristol County Retirement Board knowing about it. Um, and telling Mrs. Brady whether it's a form or we gotta send a letter. So yes, we can do it contingent. That's why I'm hoping by the time Monday rolls around, we'll have uh, uh, we'll have that response from um, Bristol County. I, as I say, I don't anticipate a problem at all, but it's, it's, it's a formality, but it's for the protection of both Mrs. Mederos and the Town of Dyton.
We appreciate the due diligence, Selectmen Gular, very much. Town Administrator Mullen, does that sound good?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, and we'll get on it tomorrow.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the request of Assistant Town Clerk Waller that Mrs. of, that former Town Clerk, Mrs. Susannah Mederos uh, be allowed to return to employment at the rate of $44.60 per hour for up to 10 hours per week to provide training to the new Town Clerk, Mark Pachico, contingent upon approval by the Bristol County Retirement Board.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Anything else under discussion? Hearing none. Selectmen Pachico.
Aye.
Selectmen Gular?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Good work. More to come on that. Thank you, Mrs. Brady, as well.
Thank you.
Next, we have to review discuss and act the fire alarm cell radio quote from National. And just so everyone is aware what this is, there is a red box in the sort of lobby of Town Hall. And every now and again, although it feels like all the time now, right, Mrs. Brady? It goes off, and every time it goes off, you have to call like a member of Dyton Fire Rescue to come and like temporarily turn it off, but it never completely disarms it. And so a few days later, it goes off again, and you have to call them again. And so Mrs. Kirwin looked into this, and apparently we can use National Security, who is our fire alarm and security system uh, vendor, to uh, remove off the phone lines. Um, and so they're gonna do a new cell install, um, that we may deactivate for two of the lines if we wish, and potentially actually save a monthly charge. Um, and so that's what this is. I'm just trying to get the price. It's for $595. Um, and this will include installation of a one-star link cellular radio for fire alarm monitoring, commercial fire monitoring per month, and fire labor per hour.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request, uh, that we approve the quotation for installation of a styling cellular radio for the fire alarm monitoring and commercial fire monitoring per month, uh, fire labor per hour, as quoted, an amount of $595 to National Security Fire Alarm Systems.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, and I just want to thank Mrs. Brady and Mrs. Kirwin for finding a permanent resolution to this issue. Hearing none, further discussion. Selectmen Pachico, sir.
Aye.
Selectmen Gular?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. The next item, before we go over the budget, yay, is um, the Board of Selectmen's Letter of Acceptance for the 2021 Open Space and Recreation Plan. Um, part of the DCS certification through the Commonwealth, now, let me back up. Right now, the town is eligible for more community compact uh, cabinet best practices grants. Um, so this vote is not uh, determining that. That's already settled. We already submitted the grant, excuse me, the plan to DCS Sean Cronin, not Sergeant Sean Cronin, a different Sean Cronin. Um, so that's already there. We're waiting their revisions, their edits, their comments, their questions, concerns. What we need, though, is in order, once we make those revisions, to have this accepted officially by DCS, we need a letter of acceptance from both the Board of Selectmen, but also from the Planning Board as well. So that's why this is on the agenda. I forwarded the Open Space and Recreation Plan to my colleagues, um, as well. I hope to Town Administrator Mullen, and if not, I will, and I apologize if I didn't. Um, and so this is just on here as like a formality. If the Board of Selectmen does accept this, I don't know what to call it, because it's not the final plan. We don't have the DCS comments draft, the final draft. Um, then we'll send in the letter, it will be accepted, and DCS, you know, that's one part of the DCS certification. So it's up to the board. Just a formality.
So when do we send the letter in? When we get the feedback from uh, Sean Cronin, uh, his department, whoever's gonna do it?
No, I asked Mr. Napolitano that, you work pretty closely with him, actually, did he ever mention this to you, Selectman Goulart?
No.
No, he told me that we don't wait for the D C S comments. We send in our letters based on what the Open Space Committee prepared with Serpents.
Okay. So we prepare the letter. And this letter is going to go to Sean Cronin or Bill Napolitano or who? Do we know?
I have.
I'm sorry, Mrs.
I believe it gets added to the comment section of the plan itself and then.
Okay.
It's in the appendix, Selectman Goulart.
Yes.
Okay. So the comments section. From whom, if we're not going to wait for. The state, who's going to comment?
It's in the appendix, so we would put our letter of acceptance along with the planning boards would go in the appendix. While this is happening, D C S is figuring out either if they want to accept it as is, which is usually not the case for anyone. Or what comments or revisions they'll suggest to the Open Space Committee to make.
Okay, okay, I understand, and the reason I ask all these questions is.
Oh, it's a fine.
I've got one third through it, because it's a hundred and some pages. And I called Mrs. Bidlack because. I found some errors, but I also realized they have been working, I mean, they, this goes back to, this was one of our original best practices, one of the three we got approved. And things have happened in town. And for example, there's a section that talks about future water supplies. Well, we acquired the, the west part of the segregant set river and the water rights, so when I mentioned that to Mrs. Bidlack. I told her I'm going to go through the rest of it, I will send her. Things that have happened that don't appear to be in there, because she said, oh, that's good, because we can add them. So that's why I was asking about this letter, as long as we can put in the.
Yes.
The good stuff that's happened and obviously they can still write about needs and that, but at least it will show that. The town did take action to. Let's say acquire a future water supply if needed, that the water district could. Negotiate with the town to be able to access that, so that's just one of the things I remembered.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to imply, my apologies. I didn't mean to imply that like we can only accept it and, and not have input. We can absolutely, like if Selectman Pacheco wants something in there that he, he reads and doesn't think is there, but should be, absolutely, we can.
Okay.
We can tell the Open Space Committee that, yeah, the plan's not done is the whole point.
All right.
We just wanted to get it submitted.
Okay.
In its draft, final draft form, so that we check off the box, Selectman Goulart, for Community Compact Cabinet Best Practice Grants.
You know, it's a little bit like our hazard mitigation plan in our M V P plan that, well, we went through the workshops and submitted it. And sent it in, and then we did the, the three town thing we've been working on. And Bill submitted that, Bill Napolitano submitted that. And we're still working on it and fine tuning things, but I didn't want to. I didn't want to go through the rest of it and find out if there were other things we can't do, anything, we can't.
More info, like why, you go, why am I reading this?
I will say, I told Mrs. Bidlack, I commended her for what I've read so far. I told her, I learned quite a bit about things that I didn't know about this town. And it reminded me of my student days with earth science and a lot of the things that were mentioned. In addition. We have to deal with. Rare species or endangered species with stormwater. They've got more things in there that obviously don't enter the stormwater thing, we look at pretty much amphibious things, but they had other forms of endangered species. And I thought that was really great, and I was very impressed with what I've read so far, a lot of work, a lot of good stuff.
Oh, I agree. Bedside reading, no, just kidding.
No, no, I can't have my red pen there, you gotta, I got.
There's nothing leisurely about that, right?
No, no.
So with that, I will entertain motions to. Draft and submit a letter of acceptance. For the two thousand twenty-one Open Space and Recreation Pan Plan to be included in the appendix of the final draft.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and again. Um, Selectman Pacheco, Selectman Goulart, if you have anything specific that you want changed or added, removed. Feel free to reach out to the Open Space Committee or Bill Napolitano will make those changes, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Selectman Pacheco, your vote, sir.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye, and thank you, everyone, especially the Open Space Committee and Mr. Napolitano for their work on that important.
Dr. Z.
Yes, absolutely.
Can we finish up the rest of the open meeting agenda and go back to the budget? Because that budget discussion is going to take quite a while and some people might be. Might want to drop off or they might want to have public comment or whatever. And I'm just thinking. We have one item, I think, under. Thirteen, so I'm going to make a motion that we take Agenda Item thirteen D, David, out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectman Pacheco.
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Do we have the letter, does someone have it up, can they read it?
I have it.
Okay, thank you.
This is, this letter is from Robert. Henrique, Tuesday, March second. Address to. Mr. Cassidy. And Selectman Pacheco. And the subject is resignation. Good evening, Sean. Please accept my letter of resignation from the Dayton Human Rights Committee effective March second, two thousand twenty-one. I wish you great success, best regards, Bob Henrique. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Mr. Henrique with thanks and appreciation for his service.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I just want to say he's been a great asset to the Human Rights Commission, he's going to be missed. And as a result of that resignation, we're short two people, so we're looking for two more people.
Nice. All right. Uh, Selectman Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Do we have anything under acknowledgements? No.
Um, I have something that I, when I was. At Town Hall late this afternoon, I am not going to mention. The person. That I'm going to refer to. But if anyone entered the vestibule at Town Hall during the past week or so, you saw a poster about a missing person. Who was a resident of the town of Dayton. I was given, the post was taken down today because the person was found. And the person is okay. And. It was brought to my attention that, and requested that this board tonight recognize. The efforts of the Dayton Police Department, especially Patrolman Mike Marshall. Because he worked tirelessly on this. And due to his work and that of his colleagues, this person was found okay. And it was just felt that his, his role in this. Needed to be publicly recognized, so that's what I'm doing tonight is to say, thanks, Mike, for a job well done. We certainly appreciate everything you've put into it and obviously. As I said, somebody brought this to my attention, so it's not only the Board of Selectmen who, who recognize your role in this, but. Kudos and thank you very much.
Thank you. And minutes, please, I will entertain motions to accept for review the Board of Selectmen's regular minutes of February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
I say move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. I will also entertain motions to approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of December second, two thousand twenty and February third, two thousand twenty-one.
I say move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mrs. Brady, did I return those to you, I've lost track.
I have too, I believe you have returned those.
Okay.
Selectman Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Next on the agenda is approval of the warrants, Selectman Goulart?
Dr. Z, would you take, uh, I'm going to make a motion, you take Agenda Item seventeen, public input out of order. I got to run out to the bag that I had with me today, because those numbers are in there, so I just need to run down the hall to get my bag. Okay, so, so my motion is to take next Agenda Item seventeen. Out of order.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, I'll step down, oh, you seconded it, I'm sorry. Selectman Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, Selectmen Zagrafos is an aye. Public input. Feel free to unmute yourself, just state your name and your address.
I see Mr. Gale's got his hand up.
I do it, my, my question was because I was waiting and I didn't know if there's something actually down the road, but I know you had mentioned earlier, there would be further discussion of two one one.
No, not discussion, there was an announcement that we put together.
Okay, then what I will say under public input is that. The Commission on Disability, if you'll remember at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, I discussed putting together resource information so that we can support residents. Who are trying to potentially book and book transportation as well through the mass health system and book their. Their vaccine through the two one system or online, and these are specifically for residents who do not have the ability to do it independently because of their disability, their age, et cetera, et cetera. And the, the Board of Selectmen back in your last meeting on the twenty-fifth of February have given a thumbs up to that, so I just wanted to let everyone know. That I have now provided the Town Administrator. With the language that we are planning to hopefully put up on the website. With the town and on the Facebook page, as well as the sheet that we would be using for information for each resident to track as we get for our, for our volunteers. I now have several volunteers who are on board to support this process and do phone calls to the two one one system, the mass health system, and also do the online. Knowing that we don't, we can't guarantee anything, there is virtually no ability to guarantee anything here. For the residents except, and even booking them, if there's nothing available, they may not get booked for three or four days and it could be a week later, so there's a lot involved for follow-up and so forth and so on. There's not an age issue here, because if they have varying disabilities and so forth, then some of those age limitations don't, are, are not affected. It's, there are a number of criteria in order to do it this way, and the first one is that this resident doesn't have their own versus their own ability or other assistance to do these things on their own. So I will be finalizing, I hope this with the Town Administrator tomorrow for the language that he has now to review. And if everything goes according to plan and he accepts it, I will propose tomorrow night at our next. Meeting of the Disability Commission that we launch this as of Friday, and I would ask then as well that the. Phone calls that the council and agent have received or anyone on behalf of the Veterans Office or the Board of Health have received for any residents who are asking for help. To book these things that they passed that information along to us, so we can contact those residents and see if they still need assistance or if they've received assistance. If they don't meet our criteria, we will not be able to help them, but at least we'll be able to reach out and see if they still need that kind of assistance. So I just wanted to get that out there. And if anyone, anyone has any questions.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions or anything else under public input? Okay, we'll go to the budget. I'm sorry, we'll go to approval of the warrants, Selectman Goulart.
Yeah, I know we will, oh, wait a minute. I'm trying, I've got the email, I'm just trying to bring it up.
Okay, we'll do it later then, we'll go to the budget, sorry, it's already ten o'clock.
I've got it, I've got it, sorry, sorry. Too many papers here. I'll get organized the next time, the next time, a hundred years. Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Thirty-six A dash. Twenty-one in the amount of ninety thousand seventeen dollars, twenty cents payroll. Thirty-six B dash twenty-one, the amount of seventy-one thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars, eighty-seven cents accounts payable be approved, both dated March the third.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Selectman Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved, thirty-seven A dash twenty-one in the amount of eighty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars, sixty cents payroll. Thirty-seven B dash twenty-one in the amount of a hundred ninety-six thousand, a hundred sixty-two dollars, eighty-five cents accounts payable. And thirty-seven C. In the amount of ninety-three thousand seven hundred sixty dollars, ninety-nine cents accounts payable, all dated March tenth be approved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye. Review of budgets. So the first one is town meeting, I just wanted my colleagues to be aware. I didn't make recommendations as the Town Administrator for anything that, that I myself generated with Karen and Leann. So we did all the Board of Selectmen's budgets, anything that falls under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, and thus I didn't make a recommendation, so if. Town Administrator Mullen would like to put one in, he's free to do so.
I do have a question about the budgets. I noticed that some of them, the format has changed. For example, the town meeting. We go fiscal year nineteen, twenty, twenty-one and what the proposal is for twenty-two. But in some of them, it just gives the proposal for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. And gives an increase or a decrease for previous, the previous year, so. I was wondering why that, that had changed that format.
Do you have an example?
Yes, the Board of Appeals, for example, one seventy-six.
One seventy-six. So they didn't even submit one, that might, that might be why.
So there's, there's a lot of them then, so there's a lot of committees and boards not submit, or departments not submit a bud, a budget.
Hold on one second. Yeah, that's an error in the printing, you'll have to speak to Leanne or Karen about that. It's all there on the master budget sheet, there's always a nineteen, twenty, so it's just the way they printed it, you'll have to, they'll have to reprint it.
Yeah, and to just explain that a little bit, if you look at the top of Department one seventy-six. The column headings, A, B, C, if you notice F to C, it's P, Q, R, S. What that means is somewhere in the process. Columns were dragged or moved to the left, which blocked out everything F to C, so that's why they're not showing, it doesn't mean that they aren't there, it's just that it's the way that the. The columns were moved towards the left that blocked out the info, so yeah, it should look like the other ones, but I see what you mean.
Yeah, I don't know, I can't speculate, I didn't prepare this, so I only can look at the master budget sheet and all the columns are there, so I don't know. If you want to skip them, I'd be happy to, so we, we could get out of here earlier. If you want to skip those ones, I'm totally fine with that.
I actually would like to skip those, because I do like to look at the previous years.
Oh, no, I, I, I mean, I'm, I say it as I'm laughing and I didn't really mean it like that, like. The spending trends are like literally the most important, I totally agree with you on that. So yeah, as we come to them, Selectman Pacheco, any that are on the agenda tonight that don't have the spending, the history of the spending. We can skip, I'm totally fine with that, and we'll just make note and we'll put them on the twenty-fourth, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
We don't have that many, I feel like we're trying to get most of it done.
Uh, Dr. Z, question?
Yes.
Um. And, and if. Mr. Mullen? Um, and, and if Mr. Mullen doesn't have any questions, is it okay if, for example, I'm looking at Department one-thirteen town meeting, is it okay that since the FY twenty-one budget and the FY twenty-two budgets are the same, if there's no difference, to get through these faster, for example, if this is okay, I would just make a motion to approve FY twenty-two as presented because it's the same amount as the previous one. So we can move through these.
Yep.
If anyone has a question, when, when I make the motion, then it's just during discussion, say, yeah, I got a question on that one, okay?
Yep, so let's start with one-thirteen.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the FY twenty-two proposed budget for Department one-thirteen, in the amount of forty-two hundred dollars as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just want to comment, there's about ten or eleven, level funding departments. So I'm in favor of speeding this up.
And level funded budgets.
Yes.
Hearing no further discussion, Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is an aye. Town Administrator Mullen, if you end up putting in recommendations, could you just ask Leanne to, Mrs. Kirwin to reprint, reprint these for us?
Yes, but now that the board is voting, so I mean, now that the board has voted on recommendations, it should be the board vote that actually goes forward, correct?
Right. So what I'm saying is if I make one of these motions.
Yep.
And you have any questions?
Yep.
You should, and it gets seconded, you should say, under discussion, Mr. Chairman, I suggest we hold this one. And that way I will, what we'll do is, if I make it and Mr. Pacheco seconds, he withdraws his second, I'll withdraw the motion and I will make a motion to put a hold on these meeting. We need further discussion after you have an opportunity. Does that work?
Yeah, that is perfect, Selectman Goulart. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the FY twenty-two budget for the moderated account, account one-fourteen, in the amount of five hundred dollars as submitted.
I'll second that motion.
Selectman Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Selectmen Zagrafos is an aye.
Oh, this one is not. So. I will, oh, did we already vote on Board of Selectmen or did we put a hold on it? Because we were waiting on that line that's yellow. Well, that's the Trails Committee.
It's not there. We already revoked this one. I think we can skip it.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yeah.
Isn't the Human Rights Committee supposed to have their budget included in the?
They never sent anything to us.
Oh, I, okay, I, the chairman said he was going to contact you. Okay.
Yeah, he did, but he didn't actually do that. So I can't, it's like the zoning board of appeals. They didn't, they submitted nothing. But with the zoning board, I had like previous years that I could copy and paste. But with that, with your, with your committee, not yours, you know what I mean? There's nothing. This is the first year. So if they add something though and get it to us soon, we can revisit it on the twenty-fourth.
That's, that's, okay.
Okay. We'll put a hold on this one.
Yep.
We know we need to come back.
Yep.
Did we act on Town Administrator yet?
No.
Mr. Mullen, is this one that you'd like to have a hold on until you have a chance to go over it?
Yes, please. I mean, especially based on the fact that the salary, just as an example, that would be lower at this point.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we put a hold on approving the department, excuse me, the count one-two, one-two-four Town Administrator's budget until our next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Selectman Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is an aye. One-thirty-two.
What, what about one-thirty-one? No? Did we vote on that already, one-thirty-one Finance Committee?
I don't have anything. It's blank.
It's look, yeah, it looks like they haven't submitted anything. Should we, would, should we just level fund it?
I don't think we can do anything. We don't have a request. We're acting on a request.
Okay.
So if it's easier, I can reach out to Chairman Schwartz tomorrow and see if he can get something in quickly.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we put a hold on account one-thirty-one Finance Committee until the next meeting.
You might as well add one-thirty-two into that.
And Department one-thirty-two, the Reserve Fund. Yes, the Finance Committee usually gives us something on that one, too. So, so the hold is on accounts, one-thirty-one Finance Committee, one-thirty-two Reserve Fund for FY twenty-two.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Selectman Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is an aye. One-thirty-five. This is how it should look, Selectman Pacheco. Like everyone should have all this detail with the notes in the side.
And not only that, a reduction of twenty-four thousand dollars.
Correct. Touche.
Mr. Mullen, how do you feel? You want to have, I would think you need time to review these anyhow. But I'm asking you, would you like me to put a hold on this one?
Well, so again, so these are the Board of Selectmen's recommendations. He's the town administrator and he makes the town administrator recommendations. So I don't think we need to pause for him to have an opinion on this.
All right, I just didn't know if.
If he has an opinion, that's fabulous, but it's not, it, these are our recommendations. That boat ship already sailed in terms of the town administrator recommendations.
Yeah, but our recommendations should also be based on what he thinks the budget should be.
Well, we disagree with Town Administrator Aaronstein often on the budget stuff.
Well, I think the whole thing too is we had a town administrator here. We didn't have a town administrator when the Board of Selectmen took all this action because we didn't want to, you know, we tried to get as much done as we can. And all I'm saying is, I'm not saying anything's going to change. I'm just asking Mr. Mullen if he would like us to defer this just so he has a chance to look at it and see if he has anything he wants to add, ask.
I guess my point is, he wasn't here for any of the budget. So if we're going to give him an option to weigh in, then we should let him do everything and we should stop the conversation now. And he can give us his thoughts on the twenty-fourth on all the budgets. That would save us some time tonight. What's your thought, Mr. Mullen?
You know, in all honesty, Dr. Z, that's sort of what, when we had a TA, that's sort of what happened. Mrs. Aaronstein went through everything and we kind of all discussed it. I, I just, if I were in Mr. Mullen's position, I would want to have an opportunity to just run through everything quickly, scribble some notes. And if I didn't have any comments at all, they could, we could just zip right through them at the next meeting. That, that's my only thought.
So on that note, especially with the printing, so like in really the page formatting, so like, if we can have, if we have two weeks, I've, I have like tried to do as, actually speed read as quick as possible. Oh, yeah, but taking a few more days and then we can get everything re-formatted. You know, I think at this point, as the board has already mentioned, there's a bunch of departments that are really level funded anyway. So we should be able to move through very quickly on the twenty-fourth if the board wanted to go that route.
It's not going to go quickly on the twenty-fourth and I don't think we should tell people that it is because it's definitely not. Let's just be honest. It's going to take forever. But if that's what the board chooses to do, then that's what we will do.
Well, I, I think, I think we'll have some discussions on the twenty-fourth. But I also think, I think personally, because I've been involved, we, the three of us have been involved in this. I don't think Mr. Mullen's is going to have tons and tons of questions like we might have if we had just seen it for the very first time because we've been involved with it. So I think there'll be a number that, for example, if, you know, I make a motion that, on a particular one and it's seconded and you call for discussion, he might say, no questions, and we just go to the vote. Or he, or you call for discussion and he says, I got one question on this line. So, you know, that's, I think it's going to, I think we can move it along.
If this, we're going to do, it can't really be much of anything else on the agenda. It's going to take too long and I'm not, I don't want to have another four-hour meeting. I'm sorry, I just don't and I don't plan on it. So if this is what we're going to do, also it needs to be made clear that the recommendations in the meetings I had with people when I made my recommendations are now not going to happen. So that needs to be made clear to people because people were under the assumption that these were the recommendations. And we need to reach out to those people and let them know that that isn't the case, that the town administrator will make his own. So we just need to be transparent and upfront with everyone that we're redoing all those meetings.
Well, the town administrator may agree with some of those recommendations. So I don't think we have to contact all the departments and committees, just those that Mr. Mullen may not agree with.
That's fair.
Dr. Z, I'm willing to continue through these ones that have the same numbers so we can get all these off the list tonight. If, if there's no changes in the budget, for example, the next one I see is one-forty-one Board of Assessors. The, I'm seeing, oh, there's a column missing. Forget that one.
Yeah, no, one-fifty-one is level funding.
Oh, I said, no, no, I was at one-forty-one. So let me get to, let me keep moving here.
One-forty-one is not level funded.
Well, on one-forty-one, I don't see all the information. It's another one of those column things that disappeared. So, all right, let me get to.
Mine shows everything, though. You're right, no, Mrs. Goulart, you're right.
All right, so I'm going to go to one-fifty-one because I got all the columns.
Yep.
And I make a motion that we approve account number one-fifty-one, Town Council FY twenty-two budget in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Selectman Pacheco, your vote?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye.
Data processing. No, that's different. Oh, the next one's missing some stuff. No, that's missing some stuff.
One-ninety-five is level funding. And it has all the columns.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the town reports, account number one-ninety-five, a level funded in the amount of two thousand or five hundred dollars.
Second.
Your vote, Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is an aye.
Oh, what was that account number, Mr. Pacheco?
It was one-ninety-five.
All right, let's back up to one-ninety-three. Fifty thousand? That looks like it's level funded. This is building?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve account number one-ninety-three, building insurance, FY twenty-two budget in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is also an aye.
The rest of the level funding has the wrong format.
Yeah, you can't see the, the FY twenty-one numbers, so. Yeah, we, we need, yeah, we need the other ones printed that shows everything. So we all know what we're looking at here. Okay, Mrs. Brady, did you get the ones that we approved so we can knock those off the list and, and, and get the other pages printed so we'll be ready?
I did.
Okay, and if you could get copies of those pages ahead of time to Mr. Mullen so he can zip through them all and see the entire left to right columns, please? See that, Dr. Z? We zipped right through them.
Well, we still have an executive session. So are we done with this?
I think we have to be because we don't have all the information.
Okey-dokey. So with that, I will entertain motions to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Number Three, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares I do, for the reasons listed on the agenda, open session will not reconvene.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Selectman Pacheco?
Aye.
Selectman Goulart?
Aye.
And Selectmen Zagrafos is an aye. Thank you, everyone. Be safe and be kind to one another. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.